Good morning. Called this uh. Community, the whole meeting September sixteenth to to order uh with the Latin acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Maydies, Inuit peoples, connection to the lands, their history, language and culture. So, thank you for joining us here, uh councillor Chamsik and councillor Wallack. Uh give their regrets um. Councillor Hall will be with us later. Councillor Kaputanyuk is on Zoom. And uh I've heard from. Councillor Cromwell so. But uh. On that, we'll look for approval of the agenda, any add-ons or go ahead.
Thank you so much, um I have two uh add-ons if council will uh count, the committee will approve. Um when it's both enclosed, one is in intergovernmental for Pembina Zone and the other is in government intergovernmental for a CEO meeting.
CEO meeting. Okay, and that's enclosed, so that's nine point two intergovernmental. And nine point three into government.
One more. And I apologize again, enclosed intergovernmental stakeholder engagement survey.
Nine point four. Another intergovernmental. Okay.
The chairman.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else with any add-ons, additions, deletions, anything seen them, go ahead.
Um is there something prepared for the Pembina Zone item, because I wasn't aware of anything coming up? For today's meeting?
It's just a quick discussion.
Pembina Zone, my item one what, where is that?
The nine point, yeah, I guess that one would be nine point two.
Oh, okay.
The additional.
Okay. You're okay with that? No? You uh. Yeah. Okay. So, seeing nothing else? All in favor? Two, three? Opposed?
Nay.
Three and two, scared, agenda is carried, so. Um. I guess from there, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. And there's one uh. One item we need to discuss from. The meeting. We approved the minutes in the August nineteenth meeting. Uh from the June seventeenth meeting with a slight little error. And we should change that, uh it's under resolution CW twenty-five dash five four. Just the wording, it says uh June seventeen twenty twenty-five, regular county council. Should say uh committee of all. So. That's the only change that uh. I know of in there, so if we could have them. Go ahead.
I'll move to approve them as amended.
As amended, it perfect. So. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and oh. So let's move that along, thank you. So we got delegations starting, that delegations will be at four point one will be uh first one is RCMP at ten AM, so we got a little bit of time here, so we'll go. To uh number five, five point one, page forty-seven of the agenda. Begin with our. Our reports. And that would be the first one is uh from our CAO, Mr. Beck. Any uh discussion regarding that, any questions? Any other stuff you want to talk about, Mr. Beck at all, or you're good there, okay? Um. Looks like like me, a lot of meetings, stuff like that, so that's good. Um. Any questions for Mr. Beck? Okay. Seeing none, oh, revolve.
No question, just a quick comment, um just wanted to extend gratitude to CAO Beck for, he's got a lot on his plate and working extremely hard on a lot of these projects. Having a lot of these meetings, dealing with a lot of agreements and really pushing the county forward, so I just want to say thank you for doing all of that, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for that, because uh we are moving forward in the right direction, I think, so it's looking like it and everything's improving, so that's that's the main thing, so. Okay, we will, if there's no other questions, we will move on to. The uh. Director of Finance Report, Mr. Daly. Thank you for joining us, I think this is the first time you've been with us, right? You betcha, so, you betcha. So, any questions of uh? Mr. Daly on this report of his? Councillor Anderson?
Thank you. Through the terror to the director, uh states that the assessments have been updated and amended notices have been mailed for, I believe, eleven roles. Does that reduce the amount of appeals that we have to deal with yet, or were these separate? Properties?
Uh I believe that is the eleven that will be going to uh the appeals, eleven deals that we will be having. Coming up in uh the next month. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of Mr. Daly than everybody, anybody has? Oops. Oh, go ahead, big hall.
Thank you so very much, uh I was just curious, um just above that uh note that councillor Anderson mentioned, the assessments have been updated and amended notices have been mailed, municipal tax revenues decreased by nineteen thousand eight hundred two dollars ninety-one cents. Uh because of those amendments, um uh the property classes. Does that reduce then income out of our general reserves for that? For our budget, or how does that?
Uh so generally, when we set up the. Like originally, when we posted taxes, they're posted as a receivable, so when people pay, uh it would reduce this receivable, so on our, it would on our income statement, like on our zero one account. It would reduce the amount of income we're coming in for this year, uh we wouldn't technically do a transfer to reserve until the end of the year, once we, whether or not we have a surplus or deficit or. Uh what the case may be in our financial statements, so right now, you probably just see a variance, like if we had budgeted a certain amount and now we're reducing a certain, a few tax rolls. Uh we'd have a variance because it would probably be coming in on our budget uh due to the lower assessments.
Awesome, I appreciate that, thank you.
Welcome.
And if I may, just a quick question, and on page fifty, it's mentioned that forty-three of the ninety-one plus uh I would assume days um overdue are less than ten dollars. And um is there a discussion or or um? A plan that possibly those ninety-one plus that are less than ten dollars become basically written off in some way, or do we continue to track them?
Sure, um Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, um Mr. Daly and I still have to have that discussion, but yes, we do have a process whereby we can write those off. Uh that will be coming to council uh once we have all of that information compiled.
Awesome, appreciate that, thank you so much. Really, we appreciate the report as well, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for that uh. Any other questions of? Mr. Daly? Awesome report, thank you very much for that. Moving on to uh. Um Assembly. Director of Corporate Services. Any? Any discussion with or any questions? That we can throw at Miss Ambley? It looks pretty good here. Moving along. Okay, seeing none, oh, three votes.
I was waiting, hopefully everybody, somebody else had a question, um thanks again for these reports, um the information, I you know, as we mentioned before, is extremely valuable and and very helpful. Um with the election um on page fifty-one, the last bullet point, get residences counts for MA databases for entry of election information from GIA, all the acronyms, just curious. Just curious if we could get a bit more of a uh description of what that means.
Uh please, I apologize, I tried to remove as many acronyms as I could, uh that's the database to municipal affairs. Uh that we have, that we're required to provide to them.
Right, thank you so very much.
Okay. Um. Good on my end, anybody else, go ahead, councillor Anderson?
Thank you, on page fifty-two, under community grants. Says contacted schools, drafted letters and requested payment for multiplex swim recipients. And then it lists all the schools, and I'm just wondering, um we pay them. For the swim program, correct, like we're not requesting that they pay us? For balance?
Uh, correct, uh to the chair, but yes, we did, we did send letters to all of the schools, I think what she meant in there is just to verify the values that they're required.
And then on page fifty-four. Uh it says our LGFF. Operating, uh we were awarded three hundred and forty-four thousand seventy-six dollars, how does this compare to our previous MSI funding levels?
Uh Mr. Chair and members of the committee, I will have to take a look at the history, just to take a look at that, um and just so you know, we are still in the process of finalizing that report, uh the government's portal was shut down and it's now going to be reopened, so. Uh we're still in that process, but I will get that information and send council an email on that.
Okay, perfect. And good.
Yes, thank you, I just think it's really important to be able to point that out to the public, that. I think it's been reduced quite a bit.
Yeah.
To have those actual numbers put in front of us, it's important.
Yeah, compare, compare apples to apples, uh. See what the. What, how the new program is matching, so, betcha. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none? We'll move on to. Mr. Wilkinson, Director of Community and Protective Center Services. Uh does, is there any questions or? Comments or anything for? Mr. Wilkinson. Go ahead, Joe.
Just uh out of curiosity, the the number properties that the county has that you're listing, you have a ballpark number of. How many properties? That would involve? I know it's pretty.
Um, I don't have that number offhand, but we will be bringing something to council in the future.
Do you think it's something fifty range, twenty range?
Oh, it's more than that.
Good. Okay. Any other questions? Reeve Hallen.
Thank you very much, again, you know, um can't say enough how we appreciate these reports, um page fifty-five, it mentions uh under enforcement services, increased number of OHV complaints in Collington Rochester areas. Is that in the hamlets, or is that on the roads, uh just outside the hamlets, do we, can we get a bit more of a idea of what's happening there? Um it it's in and around in the surrounding areas, so I don't think it's specifically in the hamlets, but certainly in and around. Okay. Thank you, um. Let's just, uh what's the other one, the economic development, um page fifty-six. Uh it's mentioned in assisted with twenty twenty-four SCOP grant reporting, I was just curious what that was, it didn't ring a bell for me. That's uh to do with the um. Rural women's? Okay, okay, thank you. Um. I had a few other items here, oh, it mentioned the webinar courses, under webinar courses, economic development, the Alberta Investment Data Hub. Um and it was very interesting, some of the articles that are coming out regarding the data hubs, um in Alberta, is that um? Through that webinar, was it beneficial to figure out ways to possibly attract that type of um a data hub? Just curious where we're at with those. Well, it's certainly something that. She's continuing to sort of have her finger on the pulse, I guess. Okay, yeah, that's fantastic, no, that's good news, um. And just a quick uh mention and and shout out, it says on page fifty-seven, the annual community barbecue, uh the community and protective protective service barbecue hosted on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, um was amazing. It was one of the better ones that I've I've attended and it was so great to see, uh not only all the positive feedback from it, but all of the uh different services come out and showcase their wares, it was um. Very, very cool to see, and I know a lot of the kids really enjoyed it too, so thank you very much for putting those together. And on your very last, on page fifty-eight, it's so great to see the housing permits as well, that's wonderful information, so thank you for doing that. Welcome.
I totally after agree on that, on that uh community barbecue, uh I came in with four grandkids and. They had fun from fourteen down to seven and and they had fun all there, so. The uh still the uh sheriff. Command truck was. Huge hit, so, and a lot of it was due to air conditioning in there, so. Yeah, yeah. And kids always love hot dogs, so, so uh councillor Gerlock, you have a question?
Yeah, I just uh wanted to ask, is there anything on, if there's a pilot project going to be done in bargain in regards to golf carts or whatever? I keep getting questions from those stick medals. As to where. Maybe we were just sort of waiting for the results of their. Project or. Don't recall.
We brought a report to council. Uh last month, I think, and it was accepted as information, so uh we aren't currently pursuing that project until we get further direction from council.
Okay. I thi- I think if if I can comment on that just a bit, was uh came to, came to council. And being that there's a bunch of uh projects or or uh. Being looked at already, one actually at Whispering Hills, un- under the government program. And I noticed uh. I think there's one going on in in Summer Village of Island Lake, too, they're they're registering golf carts there and that too, what we were going to do is as council is we were going to wait until we see what the reports are. Uh. Through them.
Yeah, that was the way I understood it as well, and I just thought. Maybe something was, some report was. Available now.
This chairman, as I recall, cal- um. Direction of council was to refer to the next council and they'd review it as part of their strategic planning and see if that one rises to the top or not, that's all.
Okay. Right on. So, any other questions? Councillor Anderson?
Thank you.
Um the report on page fifty-five states there's five dog at large complaints were received and two of which resulted in enforcement action, and then just lower down, it says one complex dog versus livestock file ongoing. And I'm just wondering if it admin has found. A cha- any changes in enforcement due to the new dog bylaw that was implemented?
Uh I wouldn't say particularly yet, um that particular file. Was started under the old bylaw. So.
Okay. Good. Okay. So. Ten to ten, so we got a few more minutes yet, any other questions, seeing none? Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. We will move on to. The Director of Infrastructure Services, Mr. Morton. Have a chair. Good morning. You betcha. For me? Right. I will uh. I will start off by saying. It's been uh, it's been great out there, uh everybody's been doing great work and. I personally went out to the, to the bridge pipe that was put in at Babiacs and Division Eight, and what a great job. To me. I like seeing that stuff, it's uh. It's uh the way of moving forward, eh, so I've always enjoyed looking at them after, so. So great work on on everybody's gravel's going on, um. Mother Nature has been really playing with us uh very well, which is, which is great to see, so.
Heard them water truck bills, but yes, yeah, we'll we'll take it.
Yeah, I've always said uh. Always said in Athabasca County, I know at times it's not good to be dry, but. Our jobs are a little bit easier when it's dry. It's so, so uh, yeah, no, uh. Uh. On the Zelman Road Repair, uh great work on that, it's uh. I drove down it the other day and 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 just noticed there might be, there might be a few spots where we need to staple down.
So. Final inspection occurred this week, that was one of the idea uh deficiencies that was identified, was that uh some of the erosion. Control needed uh. Better anchoring, uh there was a few deficiencies still, so um. They're still working on it, which uh. They they should. Be able to wrap it up fairly soon, as soon as they repair the list of deficiencies. It's better than it was, right, like we all know that. That was a tough uh. Scenario to try and get any type of a standard road in there, so it it's much better than it was, um so.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Well, and that's the way I look at it, too, it's much better than what what it was and and uh. With going from from the feedlot back to the, to the Larbury Road, what we call it, two thirty-five, um. Straighten the ditches, ditch lines up there and stuff like that, so that's great work, at least we've got a defined roadway there and that. Little bit of brushing on the north side, a little bit more brushing would be a bonus. It'd be a heck of a bonus, there's no uh Saskatoon trees in there, so, so it's a fight here. So supposedly, somebody wiped out a bunch of Saskatoon trees at one time, but uh no, it it uh it's it's a it's a definite. Uh positive added on to there. I know the area residents would like to see it cut down more, bigger, uh less, less uh grade on the slopes, but uh. It's, well, there's that.
Huge money.
Yeah, huge money and 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 the uh. And you're you're just dropping down that much of a grade that quick, eh, so. So yes. Okay, no, and and I look forward to seeing, once the deficiencies are done, so. And that, uh gain great, great work on the on from Trigen and 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 everybody on that that bridge pipe, that uh turned out very nice. It's erosion control there was, it's it's nice to see that. So. And that, and I uh. I think everybody's happy around there, from that, from what I've heard, everybody seems to be happy, so. It's, um. I got one underwater, uh. Arrange the water truck provide potable water in Wandering River. I guess, just wondering, where is that going to be charged to? Starts that out to.
Yeah, it it'll be billed to the water budget, it'll. Yeah, it it's gonna probably put us over, um but. That's where it'll be billed is to. The water.
Be a separate line item that we can have a look at, or?
Uh yeah, we'll be able to, we can, it won't be a separate eye line item yet, but we can definitely break it out for you and let you know if that's what council wants, is to know what that. Uh value was, we can definitely break it out. By invoice and just give you the number, but in the budget, we. We don't have it broke out that way.
Yeah. Yeah, you betcha. Then it looks like there's going to be some fixes to the uh or enhancements to the truck field at the fire hall for future emergencies and that. That uh. Will that be discussed with council before that happens, or is that just gonna happen? Um.
Trying to think if it was already in budget or if. I thi- actually, I think that was uh. One of the options for moving forward, so it wouldn't have been in budget, so we. We would have to. Chat with council if that's.
Yep.
The way you want to go.
Okay. I'm good, there's not, other than that, it was. Very happy to see the gravel going on the road and everything, so that's enough for me, anybody else? Mr. Gerlock?
I just have, have to comment, usually when we have these dry conditions like this, uh washboard is a real problem, and I don't know what the guy's doing down there, but we don't have a washboard. Like it just. It was the. It's just when it's been dried, the washboard is, you know, it's ready one day and washboard is next, and it's. Yeah, I told people, driving on the county roads now to avoid the pavement. And secondly, I'm still concerned about that fiber mat didn't vary well.
So. Lots of discussion on the fiber mat, the the guys, they want to tear it up. I've been reluctant to tear it up, but they are gonna have to tear up a portion of it, that's really bad.
It burned up by the hall.
Yeah, they're trying, there's a stretch in front of the old store or something, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
And they want to leave that.
That makes sense.
And so they want to go tear up the other piece, it doesn't help to patch it. Um it just keeps punching out, so you know, the plan is to still do that this year.
Good, because I noticed there was holes this big and this.
Oh. Okay. There, there.
So we have the same issue up at. Uh Saudi Road, that's the name of it, sorry, I'm still trying to remember these roads, um the fiber mat is up there as well, so. What we've done is uh we're going to be milling that up with the contractor that uh. Is currently doing the soil cement for us, so we'll be moving up there to mill that stretch up. Um.
But and part of the problem there is that every spring, there's frost oils underneath that portion of the road. Uh so I don't know what it'd be like when that comes up, but it's uh. Those frost oils are going to be a problem in the future.
Yes. So the the plan is to. To rip it up this year, still.
Yeah, good, thanks.
Reeve Hallen. Thank you so much, um really appreciate the report, as 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 I've mentioned, uh great information, busy, 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 as as per usual, pictures are a nice added touch, so thank you for that. Um just curious about the um agricultural services, the flat lake dam maintenance that has been completed and staff are monitoring the flow, no issues have arisen since the dam maintenance has been completed. So with regards to the flow, I'm assuming that's a slow movement to start bringing the level of flat lake down?
Yeah, it was. The the concern was if, once the dam was open, that. Or one concern had been raised that it might uh. Lower the level too quickly or whatever, but with how dry it's been. Not really an issue.
Okay, so that's awesome.
Kind of gone down on its own, so.
Fantastic, I really appreciate that project um getting completed and and uh. The remedy is in play now, so I thank you very much for that, um and that's all I have, again, thank you again for the report and great information. Um, and that's all I have. Again, thank you again for the report and great information. And of course, for all the work you're doing, it's huge.
Kelsey Anderson.
Um, under maintenance, have all the asphalt repairs been completed for the year?
No. Um, so we have some to do, uh, White Gulf. Some subdivision, I guess. There's patch, significant patch there. And as well as coming off of the road before you go south into White Gulf. Um, we have to fix the asphalt apron there, so that's still to be done this year. Um, there's. Those are the big asphalt repairs that I'm aware of. If there's another one that I shouldn't know about, let me know. Uh, we still have a little bit of budget, but I, and, but of course, there's, uh, cold mix repairs just for potholes still. If that's ongoing, but, uh, that was the only significant asphalt repair that we had on our books for this year.
Okay, there's some rather large potholes in front of the Caslin store in the street.
Caslin?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be.
Look at either for this year or next year, but, I mean, they're big enough that the duels of my truck fit in them, so.
Okay, so that's a, that's just a cold mix repair, right? So that should be being done right now, so, um. That wouldn't be one of the big asphalt patches. I will get that looked at.
Thank you. Of course, far too soon they'll be full of ice and snow, then they won't be as big holes, but. Um, I also had a question about, on page sixty-eight, it mentions that there were completed repairs on Blue Heron and Amisk Lake boat launches. And remaining launches to be repaired before freeze-up. We know how many or which boat launches are remaining on the list for repairs this year?
Jamie knows. Uh, she did mention it to me. I apologize, I can't remember the names of them all. There's, uh, one that we had. Some Baptiste that, uh, need some gravel off the side. Um, I think Skeleton, there might have been another one where. I know there's, we get lots of feedback over the width, but it's a standard width, um, the old standard width. So that doesn't mean that the new standard isn't nice and wide, but that would mean we'd have to replace all our boat launches. But there is some maintenance that we can do to them to try and, um. I guess make them less dramatic when the wheel falls off. So that's, I think they had four left.
Okay.
That they wanted to look at.
Just hoping Golden Nodding was on that list for this. Again, it's just that washout at the end of the concrete, but it's gotten quite significant.
Is that the one we surveyed? No, that was Amask, sorry.
Amisk Lake, yeah. And then for all of these boat launches that are being repaired, do we expect these repairs to hold? Or are we expecting further repairs to need to be done next year? Like, are they just, are they a continuous thing that we need to monitor every year and plan?
Sorry, through the chair. They will be ongoing. Um, most of it's just. Uh, material on the side of the concrete, on, at, or the ends. It'll be. Something that we fight for ever.
Thank you. And my final question is about grasshopper surveys.
Well, I'm gonna have to get back to you.
I won't get to them. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Morton? Seeing none, cuz we're about five minutes away from, or five minutes late into our next delegation. I wanna say, uh, a great work out there, too, uh, getting the, uh, airport road fired up. That's. Thank you very much for that, so. Okay, so I guess we'll break for a few minutes here and we'll, we'll move to our delegation, uh, the RCMP. Um, great to see you. Uh, see, we got, uh. Couple of new, well, not really new faces, but, uh, couple of new people, so let's, uh, we'll go around, we'll introduce ourselves. And then, uh, we'll get, uh, get you guys to introduce, uh, uh, yourselves, and then we'll, we'll, we'll go on from there. And, uh, uh, so starting with my, on my right.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you so much again for being here and, and for the new faces being here as well. Tracy Holland, I'm, uh, Reeve of Athabasca County, as well as councillor for Division Five, which is east of Athabasca in the Parkview, Amber Valley, Prospeed, uh, Prospeed. Now, listen to me, I'm moving into Kelly's area. Parkview, Paxton, and Amber Valley areas.
Uh, good morning, Joe Gerlock, from the Rochester Prairieville area, beautiful Division One.
That's Bursey Boiler, G P. Sergeant Lee Simkins, uh, unit commander for Royal Athabasca with Buffalo Traffic. Sergeant Gavin Burgy from the Athabasca detachment.
Morning, welcome. Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division Three, which is the Caslin Boyle area.
And being on Zoom, uh, with us is, uh, Councillor Capitania, could you wanna?
Uh, good morning, uh, Natasha Capitania from Collington, Minook, and New Pine Creek.
And also joining us at the same time is, uh, uh, Communications Manager, right? Coordinator, uh, Jordan Schinkelberg, uh, Recording Secretary, Tommy Flird. And our C A O, which I think we all know, uh, Mr. Beck. So, and I'm, uh, Rob Mens, uh, Division Eight, Baptist Lake, Alakair. So when, when, when we, uh, when you go to talk or do anything. There's the mic, that way it's Natasha can hear on Zoom and it's recorded, so. So take it from there, do you? Who wants to go first? Evan, good morning.
Sure, I'll start us off with Athabasca. Mark, uh, couldn't make it today. He's got a whole bunch of stuff on his plate, so he sent me in his place. So, uh, just speaking to quarter one here for the Athabasca detachment, and I'll speak to our community priorities first of, uh, property. Crime and substance abuse, uh, drug enforcement. So for property crime, the initiative remains on track, and, uh, we're still conducting targeted hotspot patrols. Uh, we've sort of done a continuous warrant roundup throughout the summer. Uh, it's led to numerous arrests, recovery, stolen property, and, uh. Uh, for, so for quarter one, there were forty-six occurrences of property crime in a population of eight thousand one hundred twenty-three. Which represents five point six six property crime occurrences per thousand residents, so that, we're using that metric to guide our continued. Property crime enforcement. We've had lots of success with our, uh, prolific offender management program that we started in the start of the summer. And but, uh, I think there was six prolific offenders through the summer months here that we've arrested. And resulted in twenty-eight charges, new criminal charges, most of them being breaches and, uh, property crime offenses. Such as possession of property obtained by crime. For drug enforcement, uh, the initiative also remains on track. Um, we conducted, uh, sort of a joint effort with the Alberta Sheriff Interdiction Patrol Team. Uh, we made a good stop on a prolific offender in a vehicle downtown here. But they operate out of, north of the bridge there at Nineteen Pine Grove, which I'll speak to in a second. But, uh, yeah, we got, uh, drugs, some break-in enter tools, and we seized the vehicle as well, so. That vehicle has not been back on the road, and, uh, matter of fact, in the last month, I haven't seen either of those two that we arrested, so they might have left town. Um, we'll be looking to do a project here through the winter, uh, with specific, uh, goal of drug enforcement. So we'll speak to more of that in the spring with results, but that's something that's on our plate right now. So, uh, in quarter one, uh, we, we have sort of twelve habitual offenders throughout the county. Uh, we monitor them daily or near daily, every shift, at least someone's getting checked on. Um, so thi- this continuous monitoring and enforcement on these habitual offenders. Has been a significant contributor to why the property crime is down right now, and then sort of our four biggest. Property crime offenders are in jail, and, and we share, like, between Boyle and Westlock, is sort of where these guys operate, so. With the efforts of Boyle, Westlock, and ourselves, those guys have been in jail all summer, and we noticed a big. Decrease in rural property crime, sort of the smash and grab through the rural gate, and, you know, I mean, they're still happening, but far fewer. Than they have been. So that's our, uh, quarter one, and then I'll just speak to the. Detachment statistics here. So for file types by workload for us for quarter one. Which through the summer, really, uh, thirty-one percent of our time was spent on the murder, which I'm sure everyone knows about in. Calling Lake, and then we had the attempted murder in Rochester, which was, uh, a significant portion of our time was spent investigating those occurrences. And then for most of our general occurrences, uh, breach of peace, uh, was a big one, but we're scoring our, uh. Prolific offender management checks as breaches of peace, and so any. Interaction with these individuals or, or files generated by us with them, we are scoring as a breach of peace. And then the rest were wellbeing checks, suspicious persons, uh, motor vehicle accidents. Other moving traffic, and then assistance to other provincial units, so. Uh, from a safety perspective, those are great because we're not dealing with the violent. Or property crime offenses through the summer that we historically have dealt with, so. Um, we're seeing a lot of success there. And then, uh. For the detachment, we have, uh, fifteen positions, fourteen are filled right now with one soft vacancy, one hard vacancy. Uh, we're getting a new recruit in a month, so we back up to full steam ahead, but. We are gonna be sending one to S S Barhead because they're short, so we're gonna go back down, but all in all, nothing's changing for the foreseeable future unless. People start to transfer out, but I'm working hard at sabotaging everyone's transfers, so aiming in point. Um, just some points I have here, so, uh, Amy's been dealing with, uh, Athabasca Cares. And they're connecting to social, Alberta Social Services to seek funding for year-round, uh, support. For the homeless population or people in need. Um, body worn cameras, as of next week, you'll see us with body worn cameras. We're doing the training this week, the end of the week. And then we're rolling those out, so I'll have to watch my mouth now, I guess. Uh, Protect DNA, so funding is not approved on behalf of the RCMP for the startup cost. It's not, it's classified as non-operational, which I'm, was sad to see, but despite our attempts at this point. For the, probably until at least next fiscal, the, uh, funding won't be provided by the RCMP. The, the budgeting constraints are gonna remain in place until at least new fiscal, and then we'll see what happens. Uh, going into next year, into April, May, June, and into the summer months for that. Some of the, the last point, some of the community concerns we've, uh, heard, especially with, I'll speak to the Rochester incident. Because there has been some concern brought up about safety in Rochester. Um, the individuals that were involved in the attempted murder were both well-known to us. Um, they live across the street from each other. The suspect who's still in custody. Uh, Billy Joe Darren, he, uh, he has been sort of one of our main habitual offenders in that south area. I don't see him coming back for the foreseeable future. The victim, uh, was as well, uh. Problem property for us in Rochester, and, you know, she won't be back anytime soon either, so we're working a consultation with the. Uh, the county to do some sort of proactive enforcement for the residents of Rochester. With regard to, uh, unsightly properties and problem properties, which really, in Rochester itself. There, there's been no issues with any of the properties, but we still continue, you know, once, once a shift or once every couple shifts. We still make our way down to Rochester and we, I don't tell people when or where we're gonna be there. So that it's sort of a surprise for anyone who might be thinking about committing any crime down there, but. Um, Rochester, since that incident, which was a one-off and a targeted incident. There's really no need for the community to feel the fear that we've been, and we, and then that's on us to, to. Address that with the residents, so, you know, when we're down there flying the flag, we try to have that conversation. And then they have lots of good information for us as well about the community, so. Um, that pretty much covers our summer for Athabasca. Any, any questions or?
Go ahead, Reeve Olm.
Thank you very much for, for your report. Um, it has been a very busy summer for you and a lot of unfortunate incidents and, and, you know, which is. Always raises a few alarm bells in the community, and, and, um, we thank you for your dedication to that and, and your professionalism in handling them. So that, that is very much appreciated, um, as well as the support groups that come along with that. Um, a- again, when we got to do that, our talk and, and the ERT team, um, tour. It certainly made a big difference in understanding, uh, more understanding of what you go through, so thank you so very much and the further support that's there. Um, you mentioned Protect DNA being, um, non-operational. Um, what does that mean as far as, um. Rolling it out in the future?
So it's classified as non-operational, so the funding is not approved for non-operational, operational or things such as, uh, police vehicles, firearms. Uniform kit and equipment, anything that we need to do our day-to-day job, so they see Protect DNA as sort of an extra. Sort of a nice to have, not a must-have.
Okay.
For operations. So I've been working with, uh, Sean from Protect DNA, and he's based out of Florida. To see what other, uh, departments, because a lot of the sheriff's offices and departments in the United States have had success. With working with their counties, uh, or towns or cities to, to get funding, um. You know, either they split the funding or the county might pay for the startup, or the town might pay for the startup. So I'm working with Sean to see what kind of business case type things they've done from the sheriff's offices down in the states. To provide to council, uh, be it town or county, to seek the funding from there. And then once we get the ball rolling on that, then we have funding to go forward, and we can take that data to the RCMP. And say, listen, we've, the county of Athabasca or the town of Athabasca has paid for this program. Here's the success rate we've had. We've had four, five, six convictions. We've recovered this amount of stolen property. And then the RCMP would say, okay, well, yeah, that's, that's good. We can make some room in the budget for that, so that's sort of where I'm at.
Um, it, it, being it an enhancement, I guess, to, to what it is, um, uh, as a toolkit. What type of cost are you looking at so far?
So for the startup cost, for the initial, uh, say fifty kits, um, would be about nine hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. I believe it was a nine fifty-six or somewhere in there. I can't remember the exact number, but it's nine hundred to a thousand dollars for a startup.
Okay.
To get the initial kits rolled out, and then we would manage the advertisement through social media and, and through the county.
Okay. Thank you very much for continuing to work on that. I think that, that would be a really cool initiative to have in, in the area. Would be very helpful, not only for the RCMP, but for residents as well. So thank you so much for continuing to work on that.
Thanks. Yeah, thank, thanks, thanks for that. That's a, that's a positive way to go that I can see. Uh, getting this rolled out would be great, so. Um, okay, any other, any other discussions?
Thank you. In your statistics from Q one, it states that there's been a significant increase in fraud-related statistics anyways.
Yeah, I'll speak to that.
Kind of what kind of frauds you're seeing, if it's just more people willing to report them or what's happened?
For sure, it's a significant increase in reporting, but it's also a significant increase in scammers getting more uh adapted, tricking people via Marketplace, Kijiji, um any buy and sell classified advertisement. There's so many good fakes now that, you know, more and more people are falling for it and they're, and they're sending money. You know, they wanna buy a lawnmower. And I know I just went to buy a ride-on lawnmower a few weeks ago, and there was a Slave Lake advertisement for a really good price. And things weren't adding up, but it was very convincing. So people are falling for these and then they're losing, you know, it's it's small amounts, five hundred thousand, fifteen hundred. But they're sending a deposit and then that disappears. And and that's the majority of what we're seeing. And Amy might be able to speak more from the council side and what they're seeing from uh general day-to-day calls. But that's mostly what I'm seeing.
Yeah, from what I'm seeing, it's usually people coming in front counter, lots of questions about what fraud consists of versus phishing. We might score some files as fraud where it's just simply phishing, um just so it can actually fall under something that's like quantifiable. A lot of it is, yeah, online, approaching elderly folks uh or impersonating family members. But a lot of people are pretty savvy and they'll cut that communication off. And then we refer them to that, the Canadian Anti-Fraud Centre, so they have somewhere actually to go for more support. And the Canadian Anti-Fraud Centre will gather those stats and investigate things on their end as well. So it can cover quite a bit of stuff.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for that. And then, and yeah, I just wanted to comment too, that that uh that our, our, our TOC tour again, second time I went on it. Huge, huge in my books too, for everybody to actually go and see what happens there. It's, it's amazing, so.
It's ironic that we brought you there, and then two weeks later, we had a massive, massive file where, you know, just the Calling Lake alone, there was sixty police officers from around the province in Calling Lake that day. And without, without our talk there to manage it, you can imagine the rat's nest it would become where people don't know where anybody is. And we had a armed assailant on a quad driving around. So the ability to have our chalk there uh made it just a game changer for getting that person into custody.
Yeah, yeah, you betcha, Mr. Gerlock.
And just to get back to the DNA thing, like the total is a thousand dollars to get it started?
Yeah, the total is, so it's nine hundred something to get it started for the initial kits rolled out, which is sort of just the, you know, we don't wanna take a thousand kits and then nine hundred of them are sitting in the detachment because everyone who's gotten one or, you know, with one kit, you can do up to seventy items. So, you know, a farmer gets one kit, now he's got his side-by-side is, is uh lawn tractor, his mid-big tractor, his chainsaw, like he only, he only has so much stuff. So one kit can do a lot of things, so. The, I think we start with around twenty-five to fifty kits. And then if they go like wildfire and people are logging their stuff into the system, then we would get more.
And these are given out free?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
And just to follow up with that as well, um I think that it's an awesome initiative that I I would love to, of course, see um come to the area. But even if um somebody wants to go ahead and purchase a kit, they can do that as well. Um so through Protec DNA, um it's not, I think it's twenty-some odd dollars American. So it's not, it's a very, very tiny investment for what we hope to see a a huge return on.
I just need to excuse myself. We have a file that I have to go to, so I just wanna let you know I'm not just bailing, but I have to actually bail.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming to meet with us today. You betcha. So I guess we'll move on to, who's next?
Morning, thanks for having us and myself. I'll slip right into it. So April, May, June is what we'll be discussing about Boyle. Uh the priorities that we're working on and discussed were uh the priority one, traffic safety. That's very broad, but essentially that's uh JFO's Joint Force Operations, which is check stops and uh just enforcement with our other partner agencies. Um keep that cooperation going. So over this uh first quarter, uh it's been going not bad. Um April, May saw good efforts. June, we had to reduce some of that opportunity. Uh I lost most of my senior guys in June and I had a backfill of three recruits, um which was a triple whammy. So having said that, the recruits, the uh the strain that it puts on our detachment is, I can't rely on them right away to be in their own vehicle, so they have to double up. So there might be times where I have two officers working, it's only one car on the road. And I I have no say in what we're doing with that. That's policy-driven and a huge liability for us until the recruits meet the two, four and six-month marks. They have to make sure that we're uh doing everything we can to make sure that they're gonna be up to stuff before we sign them off on their six months, at which time they can be on call, be in their own vehicle, be trusted to kinda take the calls on their own with a little bit oversight. Fortunately, we're getting some pretty good recruits, uh most have a pretty good head on their shoulder. And um I have no concerns that way, it's just being patient. So that was our pressure into June. May uh, May was the only time I threw a recruit in his own vehicle. He didn't have a choice because of the force fire. So that was a pretty strenuous time for us where uh most of the guys that were working, uh I know myself, I worked two days straight without sleep just because we had to evacuate as well, not only the community, but we had to evacuate ourselves. So it put a lot of strain on us. And it took probably a couple of weeks after the fact to get everything back to normal. Took me about three days to get the detachment to the point where we could open up at eight AM and be functional again. So fortunately, some of our partner agencies kicked in and helped us out. I know Lee's uh crew helped out as well as the sheriffs and fish and wildlife. So that really helped until we could front hold some staff from down south where we called in a lot of overtime members to help with road checks, to lock down everybody's uh residences or certain neighborhoods. Because once we evacuate, it's our job to make sure that nobody goes in to loot or obviously get in any danger. So um so that created a lot of stress into us in May and June. Other than that, I'm pretty pleased though. Most of our guys are out there when they can be. And uh Lee also reports to me as well, uh whatever his guys are doing. So I keep track of enforcement contacts on the enforcement side. I'm not a big proponent of everybody going out there and just blanketing a bunch of tickets. We're more focused on those aggressive drivers, the problem drivers, habitual offenders, we call them with the driving world. So the guys that are speeding excessively, maybe cutting people off, doing high-risk drive, that might be a safety issue to everybody else on the road. And we rely on a lot of people calling in, which we do get a lot. And um generally, we do intercept those vehicles because a lot of people are following them. And if we can get uh an officer in that area to intercept them, whether it's somebody weaving, maybe, I would say most times it's just somebody that wasn't paying attention, that's not really impaired, still gives us a way to check and keep everybody on their toes if they are driving. We've had a, a couple there where we made people, you know, um you're gonna have to pull over and rest a little bit. And uh it wakes them up as well, right? Where they're like, oh yeah, geez, that is a little risky for me to be doing that. So not always enforcement, but just the presence out there is what I wanna see. Overall, we wanna reduce to have no fatalities in our area. I can honestly say that we've been fairly low. I haven't been to any this year yet, so we'll see. Yeah, and that includes animal strikes too. A lot of people, if they pick up the speeds at night, set the crews at a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty on the double lane, there's still smoke in the moose because they don't have time to see them. And that leads to really tragic things at one time. Uh the other priority is just our high visibility. I want police uh in the community. Um and it's not just patrolling, it's at the events that are going on. And really, um I guess, provide that sense to people that we are part of the community and we do wanna be engaged with everybody. And it gives people the opportunity to approach an officer and say, hey, I have this incident in my neighborhood. What should I be doing? Gives that one-on-one and it's a lot better than um uh I guess, he- hearing a lot of things after the fact where maybe things do or maybe some advice could be given. Or if somebody called the police and they had a question, um you know, how, how do you guys get dispatched? Anything like that provides a lot of good PR for us. Some of the community events we went to over the uh first priority or the, the first uh quarter, had all my guys that were around to go to the big uh Gorg Banford concert, and they said that was phenomenal, major seller and huge for the area. They were impressed. Uh Buffalo Lake Rodeo, that's always a big event for us. Um never usually a problem, but we do bring in the extra staff and I paid some guys a little extra to be just visible on the highways just to circumvent some of the traffic control. But um I know Stan out in Buffalo, he's always ecstatic about the success that that's uh, that's grown. And every year it's getting bigger and bigger. So very good for the area to bring in that kind of influx of people as well. Uh Indigenousnes, we were out there pretty soon as well, and uh that was great. That was an honor of mine to even be out there. So I was pretty appreciative that we got the invite to be out there. High school grad in Boyle. Religiously, we lead the parade and uh we're very proud of the kids that make the achievements they do in the area. And big proponent of people pushing their education, so for us to be there, it's an honor. Met with all the councils, including Buffalo Lake over that quarter as well, just giving you guys some updates. I don't see any issues that are arising, um other than obviously, everybody knew about the force fire. That was just a unforeseen circumstance that we had to, everybody really pulled together. And I know Travis from the county with the fire chief there, he was lying. And uh everybody said that we did a good job and I'm really humbled to say we were just one component. But my hat's off to the fire personnel, I mean, they're phenomenal. And the other guys I wanted to really tip my hats off to is the um line workers for the power company. Uh if anybody can be, uh do a better job of putting in two hundred and some power poles in a day, have at her because I, I couldn't, I didn't even think that was possible. But it was phenomenal and those guys just uh, it's expected that they're working in the ditch. What I did as well as lead with his guys is uh we did patrol the areas where the workers were working just to make sure that they were being safe as well and give them that comfort that if there is some cars going by, we got your back. And uh it went a long way too, and they really did thank us. So um yeah, that was going into there. The rest of it, I did uh split down all the contacts we had with the community, so you knew uh specifically what we did and uh where we were. You have any questions, let me know. I keep track of that myself, so I can know that everybody is, I, I don't want all our efforts being focused in one area. So I want Buffalo Lake to be represented. I want the village of Boyle. I also want the county to be represented. So we're not just always out in the county and maybe not in the village. So I try to spread, spread the love around everywhere that we can, so. Let me keep going. Yeah, as far as staffing levels, um so like I said, I had some stress going into summer. Uh I'm still vacant a corporal position, but I'm happy to announce that we did fill it. So I'll have a corporal since Gavin dumped me. We got a, we got a new corporal coming in. She is in the process of buying acreage in the county. And uh speaking with her, she's coming from Deborah, Wabaska, very happy to come here. Uh very busy up there, so I think she's happy to kind of establish some good roots. So she comes with three dogs and a boyfriend. That's all I know so far, but if she's looking to buy an acreage, yeah, I think she's hunkering down for the long term here, which is good win for us. And that's somebody that I can mentor, groom. And my aspiration is if they wanna do long-term here, um eventually I'll groom them in for my spot. Because I won't be here forever and obviously I'm not the youngest uh chicken in the coop anymore either. So if I can groom that person to stay here and uh know the area really well, yeah, it'll be a win-win for the whole area. So um the recruits that I had, one came um from Wataasquen. So he quit being a school teacher to join us, so very intelligent fellow. Gonna be dealing with some different clientele than he's used to. But uh I have a good feeling already, he's smart as a whip, so it's good. Um another French-speaking fellow we have, so he's a bilingual position. We were identified to have a bilingual uh person here. So he came to us, he knows Spanish, uh English and French. His name is JP, but it's uh Juan Pablo Carina Panida. So I, right away, I, I said, how about JP? And he goes, that's good. So I call him JP because his name tag can't fit everything. So very good fella and I've had good comments from the community where uh he's been at Wildberry Days and some of the activities and just his interaction with people. He's a fairly humorous kid. And why I say he's a kid, because he's only twenty-two. Um so I think a lot of the schools, once we get involved uh with the school assignments, I think he's gonna have a lot of fun with the kids. Uh my other guy came from uh Revenue Canada, so he was seven years with Revenue Canada in uh Ontario. And he did a lot of fraud investigations, so it's a win for us. He seems to be getting a lot of fraud files given to him from his coworkers. And he's uh, by, by no means are we investigating every single fraud, we don't have the time. But if there's something where we could do a production order, somebody got ripped off uh through Kijiji, if we do a production order, we can determine where that person might be or where the account is. If it's some account that's, you know, within Alberta, why, I will go after the fella. So there's uh, there's things we're trying to do uh behind the scenes with some of the expertise that we're getting in the office. My goal, uh moving into this quarter, uh I've already made some contacts with the schools myself. I know Samuel took over uh Boyle School, he's the new principal. Um everybody else has stayed the same, so I've only been uh able to uh hit Caslan and Boyle. Uh personally speaking with the administrators there, so they're all happy, they know I'm still the same guy. And um I, I assured them we're gonna have officers in the schools uh for visitations, events. However, my thing is, is I gotta get these guys signed off on their own vehicles and up to speed on their training. So it's probably gonna delay a bit into the October. Having said that, we're also cognizant of the teacher pay scenario. So we're, we're hoping that gets resolved, the, the school remains interrupted. So that's what we're looking, doing into the quarter two. And uh I'll speak to, I guess, some of the stats and stuff for quarter two when quarter two comes. Otherwise, I won't have much to talk about. So um as far as May, uh April, May, June, um I'm not too concerned. Most of the stats are on par. We are doing not too bad. Fortunately, we got some rain uh after the, the fires came problematic and the summer did seem to be better, bit better for us. So we were pretty happy. Going into the summer though, um I gotta say that uh the community events that we were participated in, especially the Wildberry Days, stuff like that, it drew in massive crowds of people, which was always awesome to see. Um I spoke to lots of people from Airjury all over Alberta, and they were, for such a small area, they were blown away that we had such a good uh showing of community support. And um they've never seen police officers play hockey in the street. So I said, well, we're better than Calgary Police. Um if you have any questions, let me know, but I'll leave it at that where it's just a snapshot. And then obviously you got the, the pamphlets that we ended up as well, so.
Right on. Well, that's a, a good report, I think. Uh any questions or uh great work out there? I can understand trying to get into the schools, but you do have to train your people and that's, you know what, you're doing your best, best, and that's awesome. So, all good?
Thank you so much. Thank you for your report and uh again, appreciation all the way. It's so nice to see when all of you come out to all the different events and we see you. And again, the hockey in the street, I thought that was just fantastic. We had our CPO Ollie out there as well. And um the amount of uh excitement that comes from those kids during that time is phenomenal. Um again, great work that, that we're seeing out there and the visibility is definitely being noticed and appreciated a lot. Um I know people are, are thrilled pieces with our RCMP detachments that we have here and we'd just like Um, I know people are are thrilled pieces with our R C M P detachments that we have here and we'd just like to thank you very much for all the work that you do.
I apologize too. Jason was very integral with the fires for us. Uh, he punched as many hours as we did. So my hat's off to him. And as far as Wildberry Days, I think he played the most hockey. Um, my excuse was I actually blew my ankle out about three days before that. So I had I I had a tough time walking, but it felt good with my boot on. So I I was kind of standing around just walking slow. But uh the good news was I was on two weeks holidays after and I had to take doctor's order and rest my leg for two weeks, but it's it's better now. But yeah, no, Jason is phenomenal. I uh I felt bad for him because I uh told him to take a break and he's like, no, I'm good. So.
I think the smile on his face and the excitement that he was exuding that day was, yeah, he he wasn't gonna give it up. It was a great day and and um great to see out on all those events. So again, thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
Just wanted to comment that you did give a few of the grandparents a heart attack by allowing children to color on a police cruiser. They were quite concerned until they seen that the cops were actually allowing that.
Yeah, if it's any consolation, I did determine that the black trim on police vehicles, it isn't removable. Fortunately, it was a vehicle that I just actually took to K D V. Uh, I had the, I didn't have the heart to leave it as is, so I did wash it. But we did trade that vehicle for something brand new. So that one's going to be pastured anyway. So.
I guess with great work, so. Mister.
Yeah, good morning and thanks for the invite again. Um. What I'm gonna get provide you is just our statistics, our stats, uh tickets for lack of better words. Um. From June until till yesterday. So I'll just get right into it. Put my glasses on, I'm getting old. Uh, so in that snapshot, uh, we did a total of my unit, uh, did a total of twelve impaired drivers. And uh, one of which was a drug impaired driver, which we picked up in uh in in it just south of the town of Athabasca. Um, I was summoned to attend because I'm a drug recognition expert, have been since two thousand and eleven. And I conducted a drug uh impaired evaluation on the driver. And uh the driver uh performed poorly, which means I formed the opinion that the ability to operate a conveyance was impaired by a drug. Uh, we seized urine from that driver and sent it off to the lab and it came back and confirmed my call. So um that driver was uh subject to some driver's license sanctions and a vehicle impoundment. Um, call came in from the public about that driver that had gone off the road and basically was parked up against a fence post. It wasn't really a crash, but I think due to the downside of one of the uh methamphetamines, uh basically uh it's one of the impairing factors. Um. Not to get into too much detail, but if you take something like a stimulant like cocaine or methamphetamine, uh the body tries to achieve what's called homeostasis. And it's like an equal uh equal in the body. So the 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 stimulant would drive it up and the other side of the body is trying to pull it down to have that balance. And then when you come off the drug, you basically double down. So it almost looks like somebody's on something like a narcotic like heroin or or uh ventanal or something like that. Although it's a stimulant. So it's things in the D R E world that we know and not too many other people know. So uh. Yeah, so that was one significant one there. So. So in that three month snapshot, uh, my crew here issued twenty eight seatbelt violation tickets. And uh with regards to speed. I do have something here that's quite significant that I'd like to share with you. Uh, we did two hundred and thirty seven speed tickets in that three month period. However, you may have seen me in the schools on yesterday, Ashton, at twenty after eight. So as you can see before you there, that's a picture of my radar head inside my unmarked police vehicle. And my speed is in the green there at twenty eight kilometers an hour. And this was yesterday in the Boyle Schools on uh just about twenty after eight. In the red, you can see the violator's speed. Yesterday morning. So that violator was doing a hundred and seventeen kilometers an hour in the thirty zone.
In the actual school zone, coming, going east.
You you can see in the photo, you can see the schools to the right. Buses were, uh, there was one bus in dropping children off. There was a few children walking up the sidewalk, which is on the other side of the ditch there. And there was also buses coming as I was roadside with this violator. So the violator, uh, although it's a British Columbia license plate was from Lacklubish. And that person was issued a summons to appear in court October twenty eighth in Boyle. So almost quadrupled the speed limit. So I thought that was significant that I'd share with you. Um, my record in the schools on was was ninety until this hundred and seventeen. Sure, yeah.
This is shocking, obviously extremely shocking. You were thinking probably is there something wrong with my machine? Um, in these scenarios, like someone's to appear in court, but in the meantime, are they still able to drive? Or is are they, their vehicle's not impounded, their license isn't suspended?
Yeah, like um, like I said before on the previous meetings, I have fourteen years in British Columbia and in two thousand and ten, they brought in the uh immediate roadside prohibition called the I R P system. Which encompassed excessive speed, aggressive driving, uh uh people doing stunts and that sort of thing. So a part of that legislation that was brought in in two thousand and ten, which I'm a subject matter expert in. Uh, this type of behavior was uh, so something like this in British Columbia would be an automatic seven day impoundment. And uh yeah, the vehicle's towed, their license is not suspended. As per the the Motor Vehicle Act in British Columbia. Um, however, the the continuation, the offense is stopped by the vehicle being impounded. Um, I will honestly say that it was a little difficult for me to give back this driver's license and issue a summons and say, have a nice day, drive safely. When somebody's quadruple the speed limit. Had had there been other factors, yeah, you could probably go criminal for dangerous operation. I didn't feel feel like that fit the bill here yesterday. I mean, if if circumstances were different, for sure. Yeah, it's it's difficult coming from that and in British Columbia, when they implemented these impound laws in two thousand and ten. They wanted to reduce the roadway fatalities by fifty percent by twenty sixteen. Well, they achieved that by the end of twenty thirteen and they reduced the roadway fatalities by uh, don't quote me on this, but I think it was fifty six percent. So they were three years ahead of their goal. Um, and uh as a traffic member, I've been a traffic member for almost seventeen years. It was hard to get uh these aggressive drivers anymore because drivers knew the legislation and they knew what the penalties were and they knew that they'd lose their vehicle. So I would go out on a long weekend and get sixteen impounds and then the next long weekend I wouldn't get any. Because people learn. The drivers were learning and they didn't want to lose their vehicle because it costs a lot of money. Especially if you're traveling to and from somewhere and you're halfway there and now you're on foot. So we do have a duty to accommodate, to take them to somewhere close, like a restaurant or or a gas station. We just don't leave them stranded in the middle of nowhere. Um, but yeah, uh, it 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 hit hard and fast and people started to learn and and uh you know, the roads were safer and I I I wish to one day hopefully see something like that in Alberta.
So in the in bringing that legislation forward, it was that initiative of uh local governments, was it initiative of the R C M P? How did the legislation come forward?
It's it's got a, it was the provincial government which initiated with the road safety B C. So it'd be, you know, Alberta road safe. And uh, you know, has to go through the ministry uh readings and orders and everything to be implemented. So it's a way higher pay grade than I uh that I make, but uh yeah, it's just food for thought. Hopefully uh they can someday bring something like this into effect because, you know, it quadrupled the speed limit almost here. Um, like I say, it's just it was disheartening to give back the license and have a nice day, drive safely because it didn't really stop the continuation, the offense. I'm sure it did, um, because there was some tear shed, but um. Yeah, it's just, it's it was difficult.
Very difficult. Well, we appreciate you being there at that time. Um. Hopefully will be a hard lesson learned for that person.
Yes, um, so moving on, um. Yeah, I just want to get back to the impaired there like the drug impaired driver, you know, I just just you know, information for everybody, especially in the public and not like, I know cannabis is uh cannabis was one of the impairing factors in this investigation as well and I know cannabis and alcohol are legal to buy now. You can you can purchase it, uh, you know, legally. Uh, however, uh drug like cannabis is still impairing like, you know, as compared to alcohol, if you drink so much alcohol, you will be impaired. Well, if you smoke some cannabis, you will be impaired. Um, so just just to be cognizant of that, that uh cannabis is an impairing drug and you know, not to drive if you've been smoking it or eating gummies or or what have they in it or what have you. Um, in the area that my members, including myself, issued fourteen cellphone tickets. So uh you will see us hiding in alleyways and parking along the side of the streets and stuff because we have to be a little bit uh sneaky, for lack of better words, to to find these. Other traffic charges, which include careless driving, uh, so intersection infractions, so stop signs. Um, prohibited driving and other moving offenses like no insurances and stuff like that. We issued seventy three uh violation tickets. And then uh liquor and cannabis offenses, so cannabis not being packaged properly or or illicit, um. Unstamped tobacco. And liquor liquor within reach. We issued eighteen violation tickets with that. Um, so a reminder that if you buy a case of beer or bottle of whiskey, it can't be sitting on the passenger seat or within the driver's reach. So if it's behind the driver's seat on the floorboard and you can reach it, that's a that's a ticket. So it needs to be out of reach. So in the back, if you can, in the trunk, secured. Uh, during that time period, we did five hundred and six mandatory alcohol screenings. So uh, we did a total of uh twelve road checks in that time period. So that's uh doing road checks and uh approaching the drivers as they roll up and doing the mandatory alcohol screening on the proof screening devices. We assisted the combined total of these two detachments uh forty eight times uh in that time period. Um, we were summoned to conduct to uh two qualified technicians, so that breath tech on two occasions for impaireds. And uh, the Boyle area, so myself, including Dennis's office, we will have our body wearing cameras after October the seventh. We take the training October seventh. Uh, we've done all the online courses, which are quite long, um, but they are gonna be a good tool for us, I think. Um, and I'm excited to to dawn one here shortly. The only thing up in the this year's comparison to the previous years, um, because it has like a trend final report here is uh the impaired driving seems to be on the rise. And I don't know if that's us being out there more or uh could be a combination of us being out there more, a combination of the public being more alert to these types of drivers and phone in them in. So accolades to them, uh, the public for that, um, because we can't be everywhere. So uh you know, although it's bad, it's it's good that we we were managed to get these these people off the road, so. Don't think I missed anything.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yes, unfortunately, I had to put a put a coyote down this morning, uh, just along the highway. It uh, I I think it was up tree eating some apples and it fell and got wedged in there. It had a compound fracture in its left hind leg and uh the crows were pecking away at it and it was still alive. So I had to uh dispatch it.
Right on. Well, thank you very much for 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 everything. Real quick.
Like, do you have the right to ask me to show you my cigarettes or whatever if they're?
Uh, we have something what's called plain view. So if we can see it and we know the brands, it's those Canadian classics that are unstamped tobacco. Uh, you can buy it online. Uh, I know there's some black market sales out there that people are selling from their homes. Um, yeah, like if it's called a plain view doctrine, so if we can see it, it's in plain view, we're not being evasive, then then for sure, like if I can see a Canadian classic in your pocket, I can ask you to pull that out.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Right on. Well, thank you very much. We are so far behind that we think we're ahead and thank you very much for all your reports. I know we're gonna start making more time in the schedule for you guys. Because it's great information to have for and 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 being that we're in a in a in the public domain and and everything's being recorded. But uh, it's it's huge amount of information that's very important for everybody to be able to hear. So thank you for for all the great work and everything and I think our Reeve wants to ask a question.
You're just in saying that, um, the photo that was sent around, I don't, um, council captain, you wouldn't have been able to see it. But the, as you mentioned, um, twenty eight, it was your speed and a hundred and seventeen was clocked is just scary. You know, so um, as you mentioned, this is being recorded and and hopefully the public are uh paying a little more closer attention to that that Boyle School uh area. So my question with that is there and I I I should know this, but I don't. So um, is there more warning coming up to that school zone further down the highway?
Yeah, so this this vehicle is in a westbound direction, so heading towards Boyle from Lacklubish and uh so uh approximately five hundred meters prior to the school zone, it goes, it changes. There's a fifty kilometer warning sign and then there's a fifty zone. And then uh like fifty zones probably, you know, three, four hundred meters long until the school zone. And the school zone signs are up that say school thirty kilometers an hour, but also to that, uh, there's a big white line that's about a foot wide that's painted right across the asphalt. And prior to that, for the westbound driver, there's a approximately one meter by three meter wide uh painted white where it says school on the asphalt. Um, this driver missed all those. So they missed the fifty reduced sign, the fifty sign, the school zone painted on the schools on the asphalt, the big white line and the school zone sign.
Short of flashing.
Very sunny day, so. And uh, yeah, and there was buses and kids there. So uh, and lots of parents pointed to the school to drop their children off. So I'm glad I was actually there.
Absolutely. Really appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, again, keeping uh the road safe is very much appreciated as as I just can't, I cannot express the gratitude enough for what you all do. So thank you so very much.
Yes, thank you very much for for all you guys do. And uh, at times it can be a very very tough job, which you guys have. Thank you for doing it. So. I guess on that note, we'll take a break. We've got another delegation right after and and.
Before we break, actually, before we. But you guys, before we go, um, we do have, we did receive your email. Thank you very much with regards to uh canvassing communities and counties to determine if they wish to meet with the C A O uh, the C O, pardon me, uh, crops officer and yourself at the R M uh R M A and A U M A meetings in November. So that's something we will have a conversation about before our next delegate as well. So thank you very much for sending that and passing on that invitation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. So we're back up, back up and running here. So while we're still at, 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 I'm totally signed out of four point one, we'll, uh. I think Reeve Holland's got a motion she wants to put forward to. Send to council, right?
Thank you, yes, a recommendation to council, um, as we heard in our, um, in the report from the R C M P, talking about the Protec D N A initiative. Um, and the way I see any time that we are able to assist our residents. As well as the R C M P to combat, uh, combat property theft. Um, I believe it's super important, uh, to support those current initiatives. And, uh, Pro, Protec D N A, um, in the research that I've been doing has been proving to be, uh, a benefit in other jurisdictions, um. So I would like to throw it out there, um. As a motion to recommend to county council that Athabasca County donate a thousand dollars from the Grants to Groups budget. To the Athabasca R C M P detachment for the Protec D N A marketing initiative, our marking, not marketing, marking initiative. Um, I believe in that budget, the, uh, Grants to Groups budget, we never have seen to. Um, spent that entirely throughout our, uh, term. It always, we always end up with a surplus there. So I think that that would be a good place to, uh, consider, uh, that budget to come out of, uh, for that funding. And, uh, just wanted to put it out there for council to. The committee to, uh, think about to transfer this forward to. Okay, county council meeting.
Thank you very much on that. Uh, any dis, any discussion on that, on that motion? To recommend the county council? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That's four and two.
And then we have a secondary motion with regards to the mail that we received, four point one.
Okay.
Um, and that would be to, uh, recommend that the conversation to determine, um, a meeting. With, at the R M A with the C O pops officer, uh. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, Tony was also going to be there, but yeah, just to recommend to county council that we have that conversation. Of, uh, if the new council would like to meet with, um, the R C M P and any topics that they would like to discuss.
Okay. Any discussion on that to win the move to county council? All in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That's four and two again, um. Approved, so, okay, so I guess we're going to move on to our next, uh, delegation, which, uh. Is, uh. Portage College, Miss Broadbent, President and CEO. Uh, welcome very much here. Sorry for we're so late and everything. Um, we'll go around and we'll introduce ourselves first and then we'll let you, and, and I see you know how to run the mic there, which is perfect. So, so, okay, uh, Counselor Gerlock, you want to start us off?
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, Rattler Perry Valeria, Division One. Nice to meet you.
Good morning and welcome and thank you so much for coming here today, uh, Tracy Holland, Division Five Counselor, which is east of Athabasca, as well as Reeve for the county.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle-Catlin area.
And on Zoom, I see we.
Good morning, it's Brian Hall. I reside in Division Four.
And we lost Counselor Capitanic, so, uh, Rob Minns, Division Eight, uh, Baptiste Lake-on-Lake area. Uh, Jordan Schinkelberg, our Communications Coordinator, and Tammy Flird, the Recording Secretary. And again, sorry about that, but, uh, thank you. Take it away, Miss Broadbent.
That's just fine. Thank you very much for giving me a few minutes on your agenda today. I don't have a really detailed presentation, uh, you may know that I had reached out back in the spring to come and talk to council. And this was the first time that we could make the schedules work. But, uh, I'm, so really what I'm here is to, uh, just share us a small update on that. And then hear from you if that's okay on any feedback you might have. So, quick update, I'll start with, um, the broadest picture. The new, uh, President of Portage College is starting October first, Dr. Stephen Price. Um, really excited as, as is the rest of the college to, uh, welcome him. And, uh, I think one of the plans for he and I are to come out before I leave and do a presentation, which would be our regular full update. Um, and give you a chance to meet him as well. So what I had originally, uh, requested to come and talk about was the closure of the Heavy Equipment Operator Program at the Boyle Campus. Um, which we did back last spring. Um, but I wanted mainly, I guess, my way of being is that when you have bad news, it's good to get out here and face it. Right? With people and get some feedback from you and, and I guess dispel any, uh, myths that there might be. So just really quick, um, the rationale for the decision was twofold. Uh, one of, and probably the most important one is that probably around a third or less of our students were getting jobs out of that program. And our Program Advisory Committee, which was largely industry-based, identified that there wasn't a shortage of staff. And that their priority is to choose people with experience over students. So we can't in good consciousness be charging, uh, you know, and that program was very expensive. The tuition that we did and students are not getting jobs. So that was in spite of a change that we did back in twenty twenty-two where we built a huge, uh, placement component. Hoping that that would improve students' ability to get jobs. Uh, didn't, didn't happen. The second, uh, reason for our decision is more of a longer term and financial viability one. Um, assuming folks maybe have been following a bit on the news and I'm sure in your, um, particular situation. You also are aware of the province's messaging around funding. Um, the college does a three-year budget every, like a forecast out three years. Um, to allow us longer-term planning on things and we are anticipating a deficit in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, that's assuming the provincial funding is flat, which the signal is it may not be. Um, but, and it's largely due to the fact that we were able to shore up financials, financial situation with our public-private partnerships in international students. And I'm assuming folks might know a bit of that background as well, where, uh, the international student market is, I guess, drying up. For our industry for, you know, in a short way of describing it. So, um, the program itself, given the low enrollments, which we believe were largely due to the lack of jobs. Meant that the program was costing us about five hundred thousand dollars a year net of tuition. And that was to serve eight learners. So when you're looking at financial deficits going forward, it's pretty tough to, um, continue to subsidize a program to that level. Uh, but what we have committed and I've been out to meet with the Village of Boyle is that we are not closing the campus. Um, there is a camp there that we will be divesting of, um, we're trying to donate it actually. And we have, may have someone interested and that's just because it is very, very old and students were not wanting to stay in it anymore. And of course, with that kind of a facility, it brings the need to have staffing there to oversee it, right? When people are living on campus. So, um, what we have talked about with the Village of Boyle so far is at least getting some continuing education rolling. And then launching a review to figure out what is the next best, um, and sustainable program for the Boyle Campus. Um, we haven't landed on anything yet, but we've been talking about everything from emergency response scenario planning. Like we did in Collington, uh, that kind of a thing, although maybe more focused on heavy industry. Um, and then we've also talked about, um, sustainable agriculture and research related to food sustainability. So that was really all I wanted to present and I just wanted to be here in case you guys are hearing things or in case you're concerned. So that I can answer any questions you might have.
Okay, well, thank you very much, uh, and that, and first thing, I, I'm just going to cut in real quick here. I, I was, I, I had the opportunity to, to be at the convocation this spring and, and, uh. What a beautiful event and I want to thank you very much for, for inviting us, uh, there. And, uh, and I'd be very much willing to come back next year and, uh, and have a peek because it, it's a great event. The, the, uh, the ceremony, uh, coming in and the parade coming in and, and going out was, was very. Just beautiful, so thank you very much for that.
Yeah, thank you.
On, on that note. I'm sure Reeve Holland's got some questions.
Please, oh, sorry, I have my mic on, um, the big signal. Thank you so much for being here and, uh, giving us that information with regards to, you know, the Boyle, uh, campus and whatnot. It's completely understandable and the direction that you have to go, um, for dealing with those types of things. And, and just a comment, um, Portage does amazing work, um, beautiful campus, uh, in, in Lacklubish, gorgeous. Um, and there is a lot of, um, positive, uh, comments that I hear about Portage College. So thank you and for all the work that you're doing there. You will be very sorely missed, um, and you're, you're a legend. So thank you very much for all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions or anything? It's, it's too bad that that, that, uh, uh, campus, uh, kind of shut down. Uh, it's funny, I remember back, back in the road building days if, if you had even an old trailer delivered. It was a bonus, right? So.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, no, it's, uh, as times progress, that's, that's what happens. And, and thank you for, for trying to find, uh, uh, something else to happen in there because we don't want to lose that in the community. It'd be, it's a great thing to have, so.
Thank you. Yeah, we will. And when I come back out with Dr. Stephen Price, we'll give you a bit of an, like a broader update on how the college is doing. But, um, still enrollments are looking very positive this fall and a number of our new programs that we launched went well. And a couple of them we need to get a little more marketing out or something, but anyway, I'll give you all that when I come back.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much and, uh, on that note, we'll take about a few minutes break here to look at the next delegation.
Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
Could you give us a time?
Oh, why don't we come back in about, uh, three, four, uh, give us five minutes, twenty after, twenty after eleven. Fire back up here and come in with our new uh our next delegation from the uh and to discuss Mc McKinney Limited to discuss Athabasca Regional Housing Needs Report. And uh, good morning, um, welcome. And uh we'll go around, we'll we'll uh introduce ourselves and then we'll hand the hand the mic over to yourself and 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 to give us a report. So go ahead, Mr. Gerlock.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, Division One Rochester Pearville area.
Good morning, uh Tracy Holland, Councilor for Division Five, which is east of Athabasca, uh Paxton Amber Valley uh areas, as well as Reed for the Athabasca County.
Good morning and welcome. My name's Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle-Casland area.
And on Zoom.
Joining you on Zoom, Brian Hall. I reside in Division Four.
And again, good morning, uh Rob Minns, uh Division Eight, uh Baptist Lake Island Lake area. Joining us also is uh Mr. Jordan Schinkelberg, the Communications Coordinator and uh Recording Secretary Tammy Plard and our C A O, Mr. Bob Beck. So go ahead and uh introduce yourself and let us know the information.
Yeah, you bet. Good morning. Thank you so much for inviting me to your uh do a presentation. My name is Andrea Rutiger. I'm the Project Manager and Planner with Macalhoney Limited, and we conducted the regional Athabasca Housing Needs Report. So we've wrapped up the report and the project, and this is just an opportunity to present a little bit of information and provide um some time for you to ask any questions that that you may have. So I do have a short um five to ten minute presentation here that I'd like to run through, and then I have time for questions at the end, if that if that works for everyone.
You betcha. Uh, thank you.
All right, I will share my screen. Can everybody see that?
Yep, you bet.
Fantastic. All right, so um I'll just do full screen here. So today's presentation, I'd just like to give a bit of an overview of the project, run through the methodology and the projected needs that we found. Uh, we also did conduct a number of public engagement sessions, so I'll provide a summary on the public engagement as well as the key findings. And then I'll conclude with some recommendations and some regional opportunities for the county, Athabasca County, the town of Athabasca, and the village of Boyle. So this project started in back in March of this year, twenty twenty-five, and we started with a background analysis. We were engaged by the town of Athabasca, and it was our understanding that it was a joint project between Athabasca County, the town of Athabasca, and the village of Boyle to provide an understanding of the housing landscape within Athabasca County, the village, and the town. So we took some time, we understood the background uh and took a look at some of the Statistics Canada information and data that was available. And then we drafted a housing needs report based on that information. We then brought the report out to the public in June. A very important part of this work is just understanding the perspectives of the public because the data will give us preliminary information, but it of course cannot provide the full picture. So we came out and did a number of engagement sessions in June. And then from that public engagement, we refined the housing needs report over the last few months. And here we are in September, wrapping up the project. So as I noted, we were engaged in early March to start this off. And the idea here is really just to provide an understanding of the housing environment within the region and how municipalities, Village of Boyle, Town of Athabasca, and the county can work together on some strategic housing uh decisions in the future. So we did use a mixed method uh approach here where we combined quantitative data reviewing Stats Canada Census data, CMHC data, as well as the heart tool for housing needs assessments, as well as qualitative insights for from community engagement. We did find that the data and the qualitative results align, which is nice because then we know that um we're on the same page and that the things that we're looking at are in fact the experiences that the community is having. Through our assessment lens, so we did use an assessment lens of affordability, adequacy, and suitability. And we looked at things like cost versus income. Adequacy evaluates any major repairs needed within the housing uh ecosystem. And then suitability is the bedroom count versus the household size. And I'll I'll provide some findings at the end here. So we did have a few limitations. There were some suppressed data to smaller population size. And then qualitative feedback was used to fill in the gaps to invalidate some of these trends where data wasn't available. So projected needs, what we did find throughout our data statistical data analysis that growth in one and two-person households was prevalent within both the town, village, and then the county as well. So we're seeing a shrinking of three and four-person households down to smaller households and then lower to moderate income groups. There is a growth in those uh population bases as well, which indicates a need for affordable rentals, seniors' housing, and a diversity of housing types. So we're seeing a lot of larger homes that are maybe more suitable for three- or four-person households that are being occupied by single one- or two-person households. So there's a mismatch in housing um availability here because we just don't have the smaller units that are available for folks within the region. So we took a lot of this data out to the public here. This is an example of some of our public engagement. We did participate in an open house at the Athabasca Multiplex in early June, as well as the, we had a few pop-in sessions at the library. And then we attended the Village of Boyle's Farmers Market as well. And people were able to contribute in person as well as online. We had an online survey that ran from the beginning of June until the end of July to gather some of the feedback um from a number of different population bases. As you can see, we did get quite a lot of feedback, um and it was uh we had some very positive conversations. We had, you know, concerns raised by residents and and we were able to gather a lot of qualitative data from these conversations. So some of the things that we heard was a desire for smaller units. Um, again, with that mismatch of people staying in their homes longer because they don't have places to go, um especially seniors, we found there's not a lot of seniors' housing and availability of of units um that would be suitable for one- and two-person households. We also heard uh rental options for students uh was a very limited resource within the region. So having more rental opportunities was something that the community voiced, as well as um, you know, wanting to see more multifamily development in some of these central areas. So areas that already have services available. Um, there is a desire to see something like apartment buildings or townhouses in those kind of areas. Another thing that we heard was transportation options were very, very limited. So if you don't have a vehicle, um it is difficult to get around within the town as well, especially within the county. Um, so those are some challenges in in terms of establishing housing as transportation was something that goes hand in hand with housing quite often. So key findings, I've kind of alluded to this, but um how there's definitely a housing mismatch. So the dominance of these single-family detached homes versus an increase in uh one- and two-person households. So we're seeing younger folks move away from the region and seniors staying in the area, but then there's nowhere for them to really downsize to and and make their housing options more affordable. We're also seeing uh limited seniors' housing, so accessible, age-friendly housing. As people start to age, there's a lack of options for both retrofitting their current housing situation or moving into an area or a unit that might be more accessible and age-friendly. And then there's a a lack of assisted living and transitional options for seniors as well. From our engagement, we heard uh numerous affordability challenges. So um very low-income housing, so a hundred percent of people in low-income housing are in what we call core housing needs. And that's when they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. So very challenging for folks that are on the lower in income spectrum to be able to meet meet their housing needs. And then the high cost of rent and utilities and maintenance is also pushing people into in into affordability challenges. And then the final point that we had was the aging housing stock. So the majority of housing within the region was built before two thousand and one. And we're starting to see a uh need for repairs, accessibility issues, and then energy inefficiency within these older homes just as as time moves forward. Um, there's not a lot of options for um people upkeeping their house. So we have um provided a number of recommendations. Now, any of these recommendations could be used within the county itself, but we have tried to split it out um based on the village, the town, and the county. So specifically for the county, we're looking at um opportunities to diversify into smaller housing options. So that could include smaller homes or introducing accessory dwellings in some of these rural areas, which would allow for um, you know, maybe multi-generational uh living opportunities or people to be moving into smaller secondary suites um that are still within the property itself. And then for aging residents, um looking at consolidating seniors' housing within Boyle or within the town of Athabasca or some of the smaller hamlets, um maybe a strategy that could support uh diversifying the housing options. And then finally, we do have a few opportunities for regional housing opportunities. So because this was a joint housing need study between the three municipalities, these are all strategies that um could work together and and just really support housing for the region itself. So establishing something like a regional seniors' housing strategy, maybe something that could really help um the seniors within the area and establish a number of different housing forms that currently don't exist within the region. Looking at something like a joint rental housing development. Um, so this could be more partnerships. Um, and then proposing to build sort of a central rental housing um system where people were would be able to easily find rent, rental properties, and then share capital costs across the across the three regions and potentially look at applying for some of the the federal grant funding that's available through the Housing CMHC Housing Fund. And then finally, our third recommendation is a shared secondary suite or retrofit program. So a lot of the houses that we are seeing that were built pre-two thousand and one are are decaying and and becoming a little bit less livable. So something like that would be able to support residents in upgrading their current housing situation. Um, and then a shared program would reduce the the costs, the administration burden across the three municipalities. So that's all I have in terms of a presentation. Um, I will stop sharing my screen here and open the floor up for any questions or comments.
Well, thank you very much uh for the information and everything. And and uh is there any questions from council to regarding this report? Uh, Counselor Hall.
Thank you for uh sharing the presentation. It's obviously very interesting. And um I had two questions, I guess. Uh firstly, regarding the recommendations, are they uh based on qualitative or quantitative data?
It's a com- yeah, so it's a combination. Um, so we started now, when we started with this report, we looked at the quantitative data. And then the qualitative data supported the quantitative data. So it is, it's both. It's a recommendations based off the the report findings themselves.
So you can tell us about how many um assisted living or accessible housing units are required in the region?
Yeah, so within the report itself, we do show the numbers um based on the the CMHC data, and that that information is all provided within the body of the report itself.
Okay, thank you. And then secondly, um there's a comment about expanding and modernizing supportive living facilities. Can you just uh expand on what you mean by modernizing the facilities?
Yeah, so.
What what you're what you're referring to there, please?
Yeah, for sure. So we'd we'd spoken with, um, I believe it it was the Greater North Foundation and some of their um facilities that they had. Um, they just spoke of of some of the challenge that they they had with, you know, being able to continue funding and supporting their residents within within their facilities. So upgrading or modernizing those faci- facilities would be helpful, as well as expanding the number of units available because we are finding there's quite long lists on waitlists to be able to get into some of these some of these locations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Um, you spoke about a report, but we didn't receive a copy of it, did we? No.
I don't think we've received a report regarding this uh, the actual report itself.
Oh, okay, that report was submitted through um, I think your planning department. Um, Jennifer Kirkpatrick would have been our project connection on the the county side. So I can follow back, follow up with her, and we have submitted the report, but maybe it didn't make it your way. So I I will uh make sure that 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 report is in your hands.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Counselor Anderson? No, Kate. Kate.
I was gonna say, I think um is it possible, once we do receive a a copy of the report, that um maybe with your contact information, if we do have any questions and whatnot, we'd we'd be able to forward those to you?
Certainly, yep. And I'd be happy to come back and do another presentation. Or if you'd just like to have a one-on-one conversation, that works as well.
Fantastic. I appreciate that. Thank you so much for your presentation. As uh Counselor Hall mentioned, it is very interesting and I I think beneficial to have this information. So I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions for presenter? Seeing none. Okay, I wanna thank you very much for for the initial contact here and then and then once we, once we see the the actual report, there will probably be probably more questions and
Certainly.
And and we'll we'll uh we'll reach back out to you then. So thank you very much for uh and and very sorry that we're late.
No, I'm sorry, no problem at all. I understand.
You bet. So uh, okay, thank you very much, and uh we will talk to you later.
Sounds great. Have a good day.
You bet. Kate. Okay, on that note, um I guess once we receive the or have a peek at the report, we'll we'll probably uh like you said, have more questions or or there'll be more um information given out to council for sure. So so where are we at? We got through our three delegations, which was awesome. And we were at the department lot updates, and I think we got through them. So now we'll move on to five point three, the uh counselor updates. And what we can do is why don't we uh change it up here a little bit? We'll start online. Counselor Cup Town, you could back with us.
Absolutely.
Uh, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So yeah, this uh other than regular council business, this summer, we saw a lot of uh events in our community. Um, I took part in volunteering in Boyle at the Helen Who's event uh with uh Counselor Anderson and Counselor Hall. And then also took part in volunteering at the musical ride with Counselor Wallach. And uh the Collington Community Society did take a break over the summer, but has re uh reconvened. And um we are now in the process of planning a harvest dance in October on the eighteenth. So it is uh all ages, um family dance, and Carly Bilski will also be performing as well. So that'll be really nice to have some local um talent. Um, if you are in the area, Mingos Way will be down front of the hall, uh providing uh food. You don't have to actually even uh be attending the dance to stop at the food truck, which is pretty cool. Um, I do wanna uh once again commend the uh um teams that have been doing the mowing this summer. Um, I feel like a lot of the residents have complimented the upkeep and how nice it is to have the big county-owned field where the railway tracks used to be uh maintained and not showing weeds as it has in the past. So that's really great. And I just, yeah, that's pretty much it. Summer um was just full of lots of things where everybody was active and getting together and I really think that anyone that did miss the musical ride missed something pretty special. That was really great that came to our community. That's all.
Kate, thank you very much. Counselor Hall.
Um, as usual, I prefer most of my reports to come in the written submissions I provide. But I would also add, a couple of weeks ago, the Greater North Foundation hosted a a thank you and recognition barbecue for uh first responders that helped with the evacuation of the lodge facilities in Boyle. And that uh went went off, of course, very seamlessly. And it was a well, the evacuation did that is, and it was a well-attended event by all the first responders there. Um, and so their uh their work at that time is certainly appreciated by the residents of the lodge in Boyle.
Kate, Kate, thank you. Uh, Counselor Anderson?
Um, I got to spend some time with some residents at our lakes on over the long weekend. That was really exciting. Getting to see what their struggles are with the boat launch. Um, the immense pressure of so many people. The immense pressure of so many people sitting around watching you back up a boat. I just don't want that ever personally, but they did a fantastic job. I've also talked to residents from not only within Division Three, but down into Division One and through Division Four and into Division Seven. And have been told great things about our greater operators lately. From a variety of people without prompting. And I just think that speaks volumes when people are volunteering praise for our operators. I think they really deserve that recognition and great things are happening. And otherwise, things are gearing up at the multiplex. Things are starting to get busy with the ice back in and a new hockey team in town. And it's just so exciting. It's exciting seeing so many things happening. So kudos to everybody that's making those things happen.
I got one question on that. The new hockey team, when, when do they fire? Is there any program or when they fire up or? Kind of thing?
There any program? Why do you have to ask hard questions?
Sorry, I, I just haven't seen it and.
Yes. They have, their main camp is September twenty sixth and twenty seventh at the Athabasca Multiplex.
Oh, good.
Uh, information for that is on Facebook and on their website. And outside of that, please don't ask me any technical hockey questions because right off my head.
You betcha. Thank you for that. I've had a couple of people reach out to me and I said, well, I don't know. I don't know what's going on. So, but thank you. At least they can now go to their website and have a PK.
I do know that they've scheduled all of their game ice time for the year.
Oh, good.
So.
Okay, perfect.
They've got big plans. Things are happening.
You bet. Thanks a lot. Counselor Gerlock?
Yes, I guess things in Division One are really quite dry, like they might be other places as well. But nonetheless, harvest is proceeding and, and a lot of people are just about at the point where they're starting to wrap things up, which is incredible for this, this time of the month, this time of the year. Been a few long faces with people finally realizing that the school is closed and done. And a lot of long faces. And other than that, there's, there's really, everybody's just been busy with, with the dry weather. There's nothing to hold you back. So people aren't, they're getting their work done and, and we're not seeing too much, too much activity outside of that. So that's my report.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Yes, it is very dry. So I totally agree with you. Reeve Holland?
Thank you so very much. I'll be quick, I know we're pressed for time. Since the last committee of the whole meeting, besides, of course, our regular council and committee meetings, I've been continuing to chat with residents and responding to their concerns, forwarding them, of course, on main concerns. And I've been hearing, of course, our roads, but unfortunately it's washboard. Not, we don't see it in Division One apparently, so we'll need to know your secret down there. Committee work has been busy as we come to the end of the term. Of course, trying to finish up all those projects that have been still on, on the action list. A trails report will be coming forward through, to council to kind of get everybody up to speed on all of the work that's been going on, which has been extensive. I was also had the privilege of volunteering for a couple of different events. One, of course, was a casino for the Athabasca Recreational Trails Association at the end of August, as well as doing some grooming on some of those trails as well, which was really nice to be out there and to see how many people are using the trails and are appreciative of the care that's going into them. Also been busy, of course, it's campaign season. So I've had also been answering a few questions from new potential candidates, which I thought was excellent to have this interest in our, in our county and, and people coming forward with that. Harvest, of course, has been flat out. And, and so we're seeing a lot of that increased traffic and, and whatnot, but there's a lot of smiles. I'm hearing that the yields of, of the grain products and whatnot are way better than what we had anticipated earlier on. So that's awesome. August twenty sixth was the FCSS Community Barbecue. Again, I mentioned it earlier, it was excellent. A really good event and it's so cool to see all of the different supports and services that we do have here in the county. And, and it to be showcased was, it was awesome to see Collington Fire Department as well to come down and, and it was just a really neat event. So appreciate all the work that's gone into that. September tenth, we had the RCMP meeting at the town that, that was hosted by Staff Sergeant Hall and their invite. It was extremely informative and really good information that came out of that. So we'll bring that forward as well. September eleventh was a quick CEO meeting and I'll have that conversation coming up and close. Just so people are aware, tonight at six PM, the Sturgeon County is hosting a grand opening for the Pinewood Trail, which is part of the Athabasca Landing Trail. So they're really excited about that. So there'll be an event happening there as well. And yeah, I'll leave it at that. More information to come.
Okay, perfect. And myself, yeah, lots of meetings and, and actually driving around, looking at different projects in, in the county and they, they, they're, they're turning out just great that I can see. And lots of stuff going on in Division Eight, which is nice. What else? A lot of meetings with, as, as Reeve has said, with the RCMP. Very happy to see the waterline moving ahead. It's been on the, on the books for, for a while here. And now as, as watching it move ahead is actually very exciting. Even though it's still in the, in the offices and that, but I can't wait to see a chunk of pipe put in the ground. And, and that, and yeah, it's, it's just been a busy fall. And looking great at, at running into people, meeting up with people and having discussions and, and helping where I can. So, yeah, other than that, it's out of school. So thank you for all your reports and everything. And all that fine stuff and, and any other discussion required here? See any hands up? Okay, so we can move on to, is we'll go on to business arising from the minutes six point one. I guess, is that gonna be a longer discussion? Or do we wanna have a break now? I think the lunch is here. Lunch is here. So do we wanna take a break and then come back? Come back to this after? Okay, okay. Well, why don't we take a lunch break from, from now till, till quarter after twelve? That gives us just about a half an hour, a little over twenty-five minutes. Okay, okay. So we'll see everybody at twelve fifteen.
We're ready to go, Jordan. Okay. Good afternoon. We'll get back to our committee, the whole meeting. Moving on to six business arising by the Mass County Community Grants Program. So on that note, I guess administration, Ms. Kuzmerchuk, if you want to bring us up to speed on this, have a discussion on it.
Okay, thank you for having me here, honorable members of council. As council had asked, administration has prepared a sponsorship policy. And at that time, we also took to review all of our other community grants policies since our last review was in the 2000s. So we took a look at other municipalities in the province and what kinds of how they were administering their policies. And if there are any improvements that could be made. And so what you see before you is an overarching policy. And Councilor Chamsik had mentioned at a previous Cal meeting to look at Westlaw Counties. And so you'll see there are similarities between them.
Sounds good. So you just want some input from council on what they feel? Okay, perfect. Betcha. So I guess on that, thank you for bringing that forward and looking at these policies and grants. All this is, that's awesome. So discussion, Reeve Holland.
Thank you very much. This is awesome. And I think it's been a long time coming since we've had that review. So thank you for putting the work into it. I can imagine it was quite a task, so I really appreciate that. Just noticing, I was looking on page 83 of our agenda package with regards to the community halls. I was actually wondering, because I was doing a little comparison on, I guess, our website. But we have for our community listing, our community directory. And I noticed there's a few halls that are missing from this list and was wondering if there was a reason for that. So the halls that are missing, and Councilor Chamsik also mentioned it as well, Prosbita Hall is missing, as well as the Richmond Park Hall, the Rochester Community Hall, the South Athabasca Hall, and the Wandering River Hall. So those items are, as I mentioned, listed on our website under the community directory. But I'm just curious if there's some reason why they wouldn't be included in this particular grant for eligibility.
Honorable members of council, I did make note in the, well, I did see in the tracker that Prosbita and Richmond, they were not included. So I'll have to look back and get greater context on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you so very much. And then I was looking on page 85 under the Local Cemetery Improvement Program. And I've noticed over the years, it's been pretty stagnant at the $3,000 mark. And was curious if that's something that should be revisited, considering costs are considerably going up. So I was thinking if, you know, maybe that council might be interested in having that conversation to possibly increase the 3,000 to 3,500 or 4,000.
We're ready to go, Jordan. Good afternoon. We'll get back to our committee, the whole meeting. Moving on to six business arising by the West County Community Grants Program. So on that note, I guess administration, Ms. Kuzmirchuk. If you want to bring us up to speed on this, have a discussion on it.
Okay, thank you for having me here, honorable members of council. As council had asked, administration has prepared a sponsorship policy. And at the, that time, we also took to review all of our other community grants policies. Since our last review was in the 2000s, so we took a look at other municipalities in the province. And what kinds of, how they were administering their policies? And if there are any improvements that could be made? And so what we, you see before you is an overarching policy. And Counselor Chamsak had mentioned at a previous Cal meeting to look at Westlaw Counties. And so you'll see there are similarities between them.
Sounds good. So you just want some input from council on, on, on what they feel? Okay, perfect. Bet you. So I guess on that, thank you for bringing that forward and looking at some, at, at these policies and grants. All this is, that's awesome. So discussion, Reeve Holland.
Thank you very much. This is awesome. And I think it's been a long time coming since we've had that review. So thank you for putting the work into it. I can imagine it was quite a task. So I really appreciate that. Just noticing, I was looking on page eighty-three of our agenda package with regards to the community halls. I was actually wondering, because I was doing a little comparison on, I guess, our website, but we have for our, our community listing, our community directory. And I noticed there's a few halls that are missing from this list. And was wondering if there was a reason for that. So the halls that are missing, and Counselor Chamsak also mentioned it as well. Prosbita Hall is missing, as well as the Richmond Park Hall, the Rochester Community Hall, the South Athabasca Hall, and the Wandering River Hall. So those items are, as I mentioned, listed on our website under the community directory. But I'm just curious if there's some reason why they wouldn't be included in this particular grant. For eligibility.
Honorable members of council, I did make note in the, well, I did see in the tracker that Prosbita and Richmond, they were not included. So I'll have to look back and get greater context on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you so very much. And then I was looking on page eighty-five under the Local Cemetery Improvement Program. And I've noticed over the years, it's been pretty stagnant at the $3,000 mark. And was curious if that's something that should be revisited, considering costs are considerably going up. So I was thinking if, you know, maybe that council might be interested in having that conversation to possibly increase the 3,000 to 3,500 or 4,000. Especially since it's over a two-year period. Just looking for some feedback around the table on what thoughts are here.
Look, Counselor Anderson.
I'd be in favor of raising that one. I don't think there's a lot that you can do for $3,000 anymore compared to when it was established. And I don't know, maybe like even $5,000 over two years, if they're improving a cemetery. Chances are they're making less work for us than the maintenance sites.
I like the five, thank you. Just being conservative, didn't want to scare anyone.
Yeah, and I agree with that, especially when over a two-year program. It's, uh, it's, it, I know, so the Athabasca Cemetery is, uh, went into that. Oh, that grant, a couple of times. And, and we've done some great things in the cemetery regarding that. And I'm very thankful for it every time we use it. So, so, but as things, costs increase for, for anything, equipment, for merchandise, for, for anything like that. So increasing a little bit of, I don't think it's probably been increased in many, many years. So, bet you.
Awesome. So on that note, do we need a motion for that? Or is that something that we can bring forward when the report or when the policy comes to council?
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of committee, we're making notes of this. So we expect it to come back with some changes. That's not a problem. And then just so you know that when we do bring this to council for adoption, we'll also be bringing motions to rescind the current mode, the current policies, so that we just have one policy and these are under that umbrella.
Well, fantastic. Thank you. So just one last item, just, just a notice, page eighty-six of our agenda package. Four point seven point one one, it's under the cemetery one. It just has reference to county manager rather than chief administrative officer, just something super minor there. And otherwise, I really appreciate, like I say, the work that's gone into this. And it looks fantastic. So thank you so very much.
Counselor Gerlock.
I can understand the logic behind increasing funding because costs go up. But communities need to struggle a little bit. And you have to have a purpose, you have to have a project to go after. And sometimes they do better when they're raising some of that money themselves. There's a little more incentive and a little more feeling of accomplishments rather than just spending money that shows up. So just.
I think, if I may just mention, I think most of the, the grants, you have to show your project and quotes and all of those things. Some, I believe in the cemetery, if I'm correct, the local cemetery improvement program, you have to put that money out, show that the work has been done. And then the invoice that comes with it can be then reimbursed to the group, if I'm not mistaken.
It's correct, yeah.
So there is, there is definite planning ahead of time for some of these projects. I know that a lot of the groups do a lot of fundraising as well, because as I mentioned, the 3,000 over two years doesn't go very far.
Okay, another discussion. Counselor Anderson.
I had also noted the $3,000 for the local cemetery improvement program. And there's also a maximum of $3,000 per year for the outdoor skating rinks. Is that adequate for the needs of the committees that are doing that work? Or is that one also a cap that maybe hasn't kept up?
Well, through the chair to Counselor Anderson, I would say that it, it fluctuates, like it depends. Some years, groups will submit more of their bills. And other times, they'll totally, you know, they'll just submit other bills. So I can look back and see if there is a greater need, but yeah, it may not be much more than 3,000, maybe 3,500.
Right, yeah. Thank you. Well, and I know there's a lot of volunteer hours and volunteer work that goes into our outdoor skating rinks, so. Great people doing, again, great people doing great work. I had also noted item four point four point three on page ninety-six of the agenda package. I think that should be split into two sub-points. Just for clarity.
I'm sorry, Counselor Anderson, which, which ones were they again?
Four point four point three.
Okay.
State's Community Groups Incorporated under the Alberta Societies Act, Agricultural Societies Act, or similar legislation can apply for funding over $1,000. And then it seems like it should be split. Unincorporated, not-for-profit, and volunteer community organizations can apply for funding up to $1,000. So. It seemed, just seemed like, yeah, they should be like four point four point three A and B maybe. Just so it's a little more user-friendly. But overall, I really appreciate the time and effort that's gone into combining this into one policy that is easy to read and understands. And I've had made a note that administration's recommendation that if this was to move forward, they would like to have, develop a grants guidebook to assist these community groups was a great idea. So thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry, sorry to back, back with it. When you're talking about Prosbita Hall and Marder, that's still, it's Rochester Hall, dismissed?
Through the chair to Counselor Gerlock, I'll, I'll have to look back and just double check and see why. But I know there is note in the grant tracker that some of them were not operating or there was something about the eligibility, but I'll double check first.
Okay, because it's been there for the last pumpkin years.
Anybody else? Want to, want to discuss anything or somebody want to do the recommended motion? So Reeve Holland has made the recommended motion, Athabasca County Community Grants Program being presented at a future county council meeting for approval. Any discussion? See you tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
And six. That's six for no opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you very much for the great work. Moving on to seven point one, service level review, page one fourteen. That is a long, long report.
Mr. Chairman, when last, Mr. Rudick presented the level of service findings. We didn't include all the services and the purpose of this report is to table all the services that we have. That's been identified. I think we've identified 166 different services. And also some of Rudick, Mr. Rudick's, his findings based on the criteria that were established at the start of the project. And they were, I believe, relevancy, alignment with strategic plan, effectiveness, and efficiency. So I think that those need some work, because I think maybe too much comparison back to the strat plan might have been done and maybe some other factors need to be weighed in. And so I think we need some work on that about prioritizing and getting some action items and priorities from council. But we present all the information for you unedited, so that you can see everything.
I think, yeah, I want to thank you very much for that, because it's a, it's a, it's a big report and there's lots to read. And, and it actually identifies the services that we have out there. And maybe some people didn't even know that we had, or it's identifying some services with council that possibly council might not want out there and, or even administration. So I think it's, it's great. And it's got a lot of, a lot of reading value in it to, to understand what our services that we are providing. So, so. It's not a report that's going to get put on the shelf and, and not looked at again. It'll be scrutinized and looked at and from council to, to, to the public, to, to everybody. So I think it's, it's great to have.
The other thing to note, Mr. Chairman, is we probably should take the next step and, and add a, another column beside all the services and categorize them. Some of them you're required by legislation, we must do. We have a choice. So there should probably be a checkmark on those one saying, it's great, we could play with them, but we still have to have them. But there's a whole bunch that are technically called discretionary, where it's entirely up to council if we deliver this service. Now, they may be very important to the community. But at the end of the day, some of them are discretionary and you have a lot of power to determine what level of service you want to do for a discretionary service.
Yeah.
So it's important for people to understand that. There's probably 50% of the services we do, we don't have a choice. The provincial legislation, it's sometimes federal legislation says thou, thou must do. But there's probably 50% where we could play around with and see if there's a sweet spot to fit for the community. Maybe some need to be increased. Maybe some need to be, like you said, maybe, maybe we don't need to do them anymore because someone else has taken that on. And I'll, I'm not trying to pick on a couple, but I didn't, until we did this project, I wasn't aware that we were one of the counties that still did bale weighing and moisture testing. So I wasn't aware, a lot of places just moved on from that, because producers just take care of that themselves. But that must be a holdover from back in the day when a lot of people didn't do that. So that's the importance of knowing this is everything we offer. Council has to give us some guidance in the future. Hey, we'd like to focus on these ones. Can you bring us back a review on the effectiveness of this? And that's really where, you're, you've set it up. Some of the heavy lifting is done and the next council gets to take it, that next step and say, okay, we need to play around with a few things.
Moisture, moisture testing, it used to be, you'd bite the kernel of, of wheat or barley or something like that. And, and then you, you grab a sample and you come into the elevators and, and get a moisture sample. And then progressively, farmers have gotten along to where they're big enough now that they have their, they have, they, they pack them in their back pocket. You know, and the technology has changed so much that, it was great. Bale weighing, I remember when they brought the, brought the bail way out, bail wearer device in, I went, holy man. What are we getting into? But I could understand it, because that's how you sold your hay. And by weight. And, and now producers are big enough. They, they, they have their own thoughts. So, so no. And, and, and you're exactly right with, with actually identifying these services actually opens your eyes up to, to everything of, stuff we, we didn't know what was going on. And, and people didn't know. So, so it's a great report.
And one of the things that, and we'll kind of set this up for the next council and we'll try to hand off the, the status if we can get some from this council. But one of the things we didn't, isn't reflected in maybe some of the findings were, how many phone calls we get for certain services? This tells a good tale, but how many complaints do we get? And, and no one knows more than the current counselors, how many complaints you get about certain things? That's very important. I know it's anecdotal. But in a way, it's absolutely perfect data. I mean, if you're, if you get most, mostly complaints about two things, roads and beaches, let's just pick on that. Then that's pretty important information for us to know about. Just because it's only a phone call doesn't mean it's not right. So we'll take it to the next step.
It paints a picture, paints a picture and lets everybody know what, what the concerns are, right? So go ahead, Reeve Holland.
Thank you. And, and I echo the how valuable this report is. And a little bit eye shocking, you know, it's, oh, wow, this is a huge report, but great information. And, and really worth the read. And I do hope those public who are interested in this, that they take the opportunity to, to check out the agenda for this report, because it is very informative. But I also, you know, when you mentioned we're, take it to the next level, because I'm assuming this will probably be pushed into the new, new term, where more decisions will be made. I do hope that there will be an element of public engagement, that the public will be able to also come out and say, hey, you know, this is the most important thing for me, especially when you do have a new council. They may not understand what some of those complaints are quite yet, depending on who comes back and, and, and who doesn't. So the public engagement piece for me is extremely important for this. It's the level of service that the county provides is, is, should be driven by the public who live here. And so I do hope that they get a good stake in on this, this report and, and the ability to determine what's, what we keep, what we go, what, what we increase, what we decrease, all of those things. So thanks again for bringing it forward, because this is fantastic. Good information.
Counselor Anderson.
I agree with the CAO that an extra column saying what we are legislatively required to do versus what we are doing as an optional item or because the community demands it is really important. I also don't want anything to be painted based on utilization. I hope that one year we get zero fire calls or wildland fires. And I would still put just as many dollars into training and practicing and that kind of, that budget line. Because in the, in the event of, it's still 100% justified for me. So just having that broader sight. But I do want to know kind of where we're planning on going with this or make sure that it's going to stay on the table. We spent a lot of money to get these reports done. And I want to make sure that we're getting value out of it.
Okay. Counselor Hall.
I think it would be important that we refer this type of thing to a strategic planning or budget and priorities discussion. And, uh, you know, potentially a special meeting where this is the only focus of the discussion, very much like we did for the water lines, so we can do a line-by-line discussion. And, and when we're thinking about how do we categorize these things, I think we need to consider that there's the legislatively required. And in the optional category, there's optional, that's important and really quite critical to our residents. And also optional, it is discretionary, because there are things that, that we, we pretty much need to do to have a, the kind of community where people want to live and be and thrive. And buyer services are one of them. That's not legislatively mandated. It's, as far as I know, it's a, it's an option. So that's, it's important and critical for the health of our community. I had also hoped that this would lead, and I hope, you know, still hopeful that one of the outcomes of this is, is where we'll take the discussion to setting standards for things like road maintenance and our service levels, where we can actually define what that looks like. So we can, we can be able to talk to people about what to expect in terms of snow removal. How many days is our target to get it done? What are our standards for graveling? And I think we have to get past the, the historic one-size-fits-all approaches that we've used and be more strategic in how we deploy resources to both manage the costs, but also take the money we're trusted with and spend it more effectively. So some, some roads probably need to graze around them, you know, twice as frequently as others. And I, I think we need to set those standards where we've, where we've defined it. And then we know what we're trying to measure up to. And people know what to expect. It's, it's a lot easier to, to have a conversation about the quality and the condition of a road. If we can, if we can relate, relate it back to how often should the, the maintenance equipment be there? So if, if no one else is wanting to do it, I'd be happy enough to move the recommended motion. So if, if no one else is wanting to do it, I'd be happy enough to move the recommended motion. Or that, that the committee, the whole receive the materials regarding the service review and observations and forward them to a um. Future budget discussion. Because part of, part of that should be, we, we need to get to a place where we're budgeting based on priorities, not just continually adding.
Should we go to a budget discussion before we actually have a discussion about the whole? About, about what's in the, in the document, maybe we should just move it to a, to a future meeting to. To be uh, solely discussed or just a, a discussion on. The services themselves.
Fair enough, very reasonable.
Okay, so ju- just to forward. Uh, committee the whole to receive the follow-up materials regarding the service level review and observations and forward to a.
It's probably part of strategic planning, really, where you, where you're trying to set out your, your goals and objectives and, and maybe um. You know, there's maybe some services that when we have to. If we, if we have to make choices about what's the most important thing to do, we, we have a tendency to just keep adding and adding, we just did it with the. Grants program, we just add a little bit more without ever having a conversation about where does the money come from, do we stop doing anything to fund this? We just keep expanding and I think we have to get much more disciplined about. If we're going to spend money, where is it coming from and are we going to, are we going to not spend in somewhere else in order to budget and afford that?
Yeah, you betcha, I agree with that. That's why before we go to, to an actual budget meeting, we should just uh, decide whether the services. Just have a meeting on, on, on this, this service level review and, and uh, that way we can talk about each service. And what's important and then if we find, if we feel that it's important, well then. Then we can look at the monies that are going into it, so, perfect. Uh, and you'll, you'll move that motion?
Sure.
Okay, uh, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, um. Being that this is a lot of service inventory, did we have, did they summarize the service level? At all, in a similar manner, so. You know, graders are expected on the road every two to three weeks. When you call for bail weighing, they'll get there within two weeks. You know, like, did they identify, did the consultant identify the service levels that we've currently established, or is it just the service inventory?
Ms. Chairman, um. Each, each area has that, our problem is we don't have a service level standard adopted by council for. Many, many, many services, it's uh, based on what we think council wanted, maybe a motion back in. A council meeting, it's, it's killing us on a number of different issues. Um, we're getting there, you're, you're, you've adopted a number during this term, which helps us. Um, but there's a whole bunch that we either need to review or we need, um, I could give us some examples. Um, maybe a good example that we know of is we've got a bunch of registered drainages, uh. Licensed drainages in this county, most places have a level of service adopted for that, we have nothing. So, uh, that's just one, we've probably got. Probably ten important ones, I think there's, maybe I should tell you about another project we're working on and it's about corporate priority menu that. You're going to see, um, is all the things that we can think that next council should take into consideration over a four-year term. Things to do, things we're hearing and um, that we see need to be done, all the missing levels of service documents. We don't have one for parks, recreation, campgrounds. Just huge, it's a huge part of our business, we don't have a level of service. So, we've got a bit of a baseline of kind of what we do, but we don't have any background. Uh, we don't have a baseline policy to say we're meeting council's. Requirements, because we don't have policy.
So that, so that means virtually having a meeting and having a long discussion about. About the services, right?
Well, yeah, absolutely for, um, and what we would do is we'd probably bring a template for you, kind of half-filled out. And kind of say, this is what we are doing and this is based on the budget you've established, this is what we're doing. Now, do you want to go up, do you want to go down? Um, it's pretty, it's not that difficult and. Um, some of the other ones might be a little more uh, interesting, maybe road maintenance might take a little bit longer. Um, gravel romance and I'll, I'll just throw this out there right now, the gravel standard, I think that uh. Uh, this is a county that probably really needs to look at its gravel standard. Um, I, I guess the baseline here is in general, we gravel every road once every four years. Uh, and some roads get more than that. Busier roads, a lot of places have gone to once every three years and that's just been a change, um. And you can tell, if you can really see it, so. Uh, there's some other ones, discussions I think are going to be really fulsome, some of the other ones I don't, I think they'll be pretty straightforward.
Okay. Then Counselor Gerlock.
And I think we need to define the things that people can do for themselves. And the things that the municipality, and, and somehow I think we're straying into a lot of areas. Where we're doing things that the public can do themselves. And we should be more concentrating on the things that they can't do for themselves and, because people have to get engaged, they have to be involved in their communities. And I just think, I just think sometimes making things more available actually does, does more harm than good, because people just. Wait for somebody else to do it.
Okay, so. I guess, uh, where do you want to go from there, Counselor Hall, you uh, wanted to throw that motion on the table to, to. Uh, s- send it to a strategic discussion?
I think that's what we decided.
Okay, and administration. Understands that too?
This clearly needs a lot more discussion, I, I just don't think, you know, a meeting like today where we've got fifteen things on the agenda is. Th- th- this requires a slow, probably a workshop over a day or two where we just. Go through and talk about it and talk about what, what the expectations are and what are the right, kind of the right path forward and. And seek the advice of administration.
Yep, yep, I totally agree. Okay, sounds good, uh, if there's no other discussion, we'll vote on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it passed, uh, no opposed, well, thank you. And on that. All of that, can I get a motion to go into closed? Reeve Holland has made a motion to go into closed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion carried.